We're not talking about chips.
Spark the street from here.
I'm not allowed at the minute.
Hey Ross.
Hi.
Hi Ross.
Hello.
Sixteen week to Christmas.
We're all here, seven o'clock.
Today.
It's only this year, isn't it?
Sixteen week to Christmas Day, today.
Thanks for that, right. Right, it's seven o'clock everybody, so we're gonna make a start and then Bob might be able to get to Chippy if we dab him.
I think it'll be well close by the time we finish.
Right, so we'll start with the top bit on the agenda. It just says councillors are reminded to... Sorry, if I'm looking that way and not at the camera, it's because I'm using two different computers because mine decided to concave out, so I'm not being ignorant, I've got to look at the agenda and then look back at you, so sorry if it looks like I'm doing that, but technical problems. Right, so councillors are reminded to turn off their cameras and mute the microphones upon commencing the meeting, which is now... Sorry if it looks like I'm doing that. Video microphones are technically switched on when you speak in. So councillors are reminded to use the chat facility to indicate their request of meeting and all voting as usual. Video microphones are technically switched on when you speak in. There's a little chat facility, so you know where that is. You don't need to do that. Just bang a little message in there. I'll try and keep an eye on that, but if I'm wearing it, just don't take your microphone out. Just bang a little message in there. I'll try and keep an eye on that.
I'll be submitting hers, but she hasn't actually submitted anything, so I'm just gonna say Jan at this point.
Do you want me to admit people in when they're coming in or are you alright with that?
No, that's okay, I can do that. Keep an eye on the chat. That's great.
Look, Eileen's just joined us as well, so thank you for joining us, Eileen.
Right, yeah, I'm here.
I didn't finish the first bit, we're just getting people to turn the cameras and mics off and then just turn them on when you want to speak.
You ain't alone either.
So what do you want me to do now then?
If you can just turn your camera and mic off, and then what we do, we use the chat facility on the right hand side.
And the mic as well. Richard.
Yeah, please mate, and then if you want to speak, just use the chat facility, but like I said, if I miss something and the town clerk doesn't see it and I don't see it, just turn your mic on and shout up, please, if that makes it easy for everybody. So yeah, we're back to apologies for absence, if anyone else has got any apart from what the town clerk said.
What's her name? Old woman.
I can hear someone talking, is that one of the guests?
The other one, Joan. That should be John Gore.
I think if that's councillor Carr talking, we can all hear you.
That's right, I've just muted him.
Oh, okay, even better, that's obvious, isn't it? Right, okay, so item two on the agenda is declarations of interest, so you know how that works, if anyone's got any interests, if we start with Brockston Borough Council.
Mr Mayor, I have declaration of interest. I'm councillor Grindel here, Brockston Borough Council, and I will underline that with representing Brockston Borough Council on the town bid.
Okay, thank you. I'll best to clear the same interests as councillor Grindel as well.
And me. And me, Richard, please.
Thank you, Ray.
Can I declare my interest to member of Brockston Borough Council, Eileen Appleton?
Thank you.
Mr Mayor, me, Stafford Towns Board, and also Brockston Borough Council.
Thank you.
Tim Hallam, Brockston Borough Council.
Thank you, everybody. Is that all the interests everyone? We've got no county councils or nothing, I've always say. Okay, that was easy. Right, so next item on the agenda is number three, which is minutes of previous meeting. I actually noticed on there, if it's okay for me to say, that I know at the last meeting we had two or three recorded votes, and they've not actually been recorded in the minutes, so I don't know how that works, where they've not been put in, because obviously recorded votes are there for a reason. So I don't know if anyone else has got to say anything on that before we ask the town clerk to come back on that one.
Sorry, what, I didn't catch that, you broke up, what was the issue?
Okay, sorry, okay, minutes from the previous meeting, there was several recorded votes in that meeting, and none of them's been written down in the minutes.
There was only one proper recorded vote, although we are calling by roll call, it's the same as putting your hands up, so I thought I'd just get them open because I can't remember.
Yeah.
There should just be one proper recorded vote in there.
That's annoying.
No, I do apologise, I missed that off. No, there was just one recorded vote, so if you want to just not approve those at this point, then I can put that in.
It's easily done, it was all over the place, it wasn't, you know what I mean, it was my first thing as well, so I'll let you off on that one, but yeah, so if that could be done, then so do we, how does that work, because if we can't approve them?
No, just, I'll bring them to the next meeting, that's fine, I'll just amend those. Assuming if you want to say anything about the rest of it now, is this time to do it, and then I'll bring them to the next meeting.
Anyone else got any issues with the previous meeting minutes? No, it's just that. Okay, thank you, everybody. Right, so item four on the agenda, the accessibility statement. Definitely over to the town clerk for this one.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is basically just to make sure that our accessibility regulations, we have to produce an accessibility statement. And this is to show that the website is accessible for people that are partially sighted or blind, or of course deaf, if we want to put videos on there and put subtitles on. So it's basically just setting out that the testing has been done. The whole of it is compliant, apart from things that we put on it in the sense of images where we need to put alt text on. And generally, most of the things that we they'll be picked up by a screen reader, but it's third party things that come in that don't necessarily have that, and whilst we don't have control over that, we could do something about that, so it's just a catchall really for us, just in case something goes on and we've missed it from a third party item, but generally, we are compliant.
Well, that's good to know, so thank you for the work that's gone into that. Does anyone have any questions on that? I'm sure you've all read it. Well, thank you to the town clerk for the work put into that then, okay. Right, next item on the agenda is item five, minutes of committees and advisory committees, and then there's three parts on there, and I'll let the town clerk do this bit again, thank you.
Thank you. So these are the minutes that went to the HR and Policy Review Committee, and they're there for information for the most part, because they will be approved at the committee as a correct set, however, there were some recommendations that came through. Specifically is the pack of policies which was sent over to everybody, and they have been sort of dealt with and talked about in detail, I know most members that were on that had a good go at them, and a lot of them are to be reviewed again in six months, so it's over to, well, perhaps gave over to the charity HR committee if she wants to introduce those and propose to accept or whatever with them.
Yep, no, it makes sense to me, and I think that's councillor Kearney, so if you want to do the one, two and three in order, and then if anyone's got any questions, thank you.
Oh, yes. So let me just find the right page on the agenda. Yeah, so the policies that we're asking for you to approve, some of them are that we just want to approve them and review them regularly as we would, but there are a couple of policies in the policy pack that we would like to to initially put in place as a short term interim measure because they are vital and they are needed, but there are a couple of them that need a bit more work on them. So what the HR and Policy Review Committee is actually asking you to do is to approve those in the short term, and they will be reviewed at some point between now and, I think, there's a meeting in January and there's one in October. So it will be one of those meetings that they will be reviewed and set in stone. So I'm just trying to think what they were, I know that the sickness and absence policy was one of them. And I think there was the maternity and paternity policy, and I think there was also the doo 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 going on my head, I'm really sorry because I haven't got the list in front of me.
Let me read the list out for you, I've got it in front of me.
Please, yes, because I can't actually see it on.
Okay, well, I'll do it in order that it's opened up in the zip file, and thank you for doing it like that because it makes it easier, right, so we've got an annual leave, annual leave, anti-bullying and harassment, emergency dependents leave, equality and diverse.
It's in the minutes, Mr Mayor, if that helps us to the ones which want to be reviewed.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna read the whole list out.
So the ones that need to be brought back are the expenses policy, the maternity and paternity leave and pay, the sickness absence and the training and development policy, and then there were some others in there which haven't been brought to you for approval tonight anyway, because they needed more work, so we won't talk about those at this point. But those were the ones that just needed to be reviewed again, just, it was mostly about making sure that they were inclusive, and the training policy one was related to paying back training costs if a member of staff should leave, and it was an expensive course.
Yeah, I think, did we agree that we were gonna ask the finance committee, I think, to look at the
Yeah.
Yeah, that we would ask to be repaid. So yeah, so I would propose that we accept the policies mentioned already in the interim, and then is that, are those just the ones that we're doing for now, Sabrina, the ones that need to go back?
No, there's the whole, so the ones that we're doing are the anti-bullying and harassment, equality and diversity, annual leave, student leave, expenses, flexible working, loan working, maternity leave and pay and paternity leave and pay, subject to the review. The sickness absence, subject to review, training and development, subject to review, whistleblowing, and that was it, so so the others will go.
Yeah, okay, so.
Oh, okay, we've got a hand up here, I spotted it, so councillor Brown. We've lost him, he's gone to Chippy already.
He's on mute, if that helps.
Sorry, I was pressing the wrong button, I have my picture but not my voice. No, I didn't know when we were going to second, I was at the meeting and we did go over this in quite some detail, didn't we, so I was prepared to second it.
Thank you.
We probably haven't got there yet, so my apologies.
Okay, do you want to second that proposal that Ella's put for all the policies, yep?
Yes, so just, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions before we move to the vote on that one? Should we do it, should we do it one, two, three, we'll do it like that? So has anyone got any questions before we go to the vote on those? No, so I'm just leaving it a little bit because I know sometimes we get delays, I don't want to start voting and someone shouts something, okay. So if we do it by roll call, and okay, are you ready for start voting? So you have a voting for, against or abstaining on the policies that Ella's just mentioned, and thank you for all the work you've done putting these together because they're massive. Okay, so right, we'll start at the top, so Eileen's not here, oh, Eileen is here, isn't she?
I am here.
Okay, so councillor Atherton.
For.
Councillor Brown.
For.
Councillor Grindel.
For.
Councillor Epton, is she here today?
For.
She is.
Yep. Councillor Kearney.
For.
All right, Jan's not here, is she? Let me screw that one out. Okay, councillor Jess Hallam.
For.
Councillor John Hawkins.
For.
Councillor John McGrath.
For.
Councillor Alan Davies.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Darby.
For.
Councillor McCrory, that's me, for. Is Ross here today? Because you know I'm gonna get his name wrong if he is.
I am.
Oh, he's here. Councillor Ross.
For.
I've got it sourced. Councillor Frost.
For.
Councillor Patterson.
For.
Councillor Hallam, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, Theresa even.
For.
I said Hallam, and then Tim, councillor Hallam, Tim.
For.
I think that's passed then, hasn't it? That's unanimous as well, so. Okay, that makes it easier for next time. So the next item is two, which is casual cleaner. Is that somebody or is that the town clerk again?
I'll take that chair if that's okay, so this is basically to approve approaching Stanton Bydale Parish Council, they have their own village hall. And our cleaner, obviously we've got a vacant post at the moment, and our cleaner does need some help when doing the deep cleans that we've got to do to reopen the so, and obviously we need holiday cover as well because we've only got one employee. So what I would like to do is do what principal authorities do, which we are allowed to do as well, is create a section 113 agreement with Stanton Bydale to enable us to use their cleaner. It's almost like an agency type thing, so it's just a cost recovery basis, it's far cheaper than an agency for us to do. I've already spoken to them informally about it, and they've got no problem with doing it, they're quite happy to do so. So essentially, we would have the cover we need, but they're not an employee for us, so we don't have the add-on costs of an employee, and it just gives us that temporary cover to call on whenever we need it.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that? Oh, we've got three hands popped up here, now you're gonna make me start looking now. Okay, the first hand I can see is councillor Hallam. And then can you put your hands down when you've done it as well, because then it might make it easier for me to spot whose names are all. So yeah, also councillor Tim Hallam.
The question I have on this, sorry, I'll turn my thingy on. Question I have on this is the vacant post, as I understand it, there is one vacant post, and I'd ask for whether we can get some clarification on that. So is this an intermediate measure pending a recruitment of somebody to take over full time, and what kind of timescales are we looking at if that's the case? Thank you.
Do you want to take all the questions first, then come back, or do you want to do one at a time? What's easier?
Shall I do one at a time, because it might answer the questions. So yes, I'm expecting that this is an intermediate thing, because we do have that vacant post which we need to recruit to, and that is the next item on the agenda. So hopefully timescales will become clearer then. But having said that, it does mean if there was something, an issue like a sickness and a holiday occurring at the same time, if we have this agreement in place, then it means we can call on them in an emergency to help us, should we need it.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, councillor Hallam?
Yes, provided, I just have a scepticism about the potential costs over the long term if we were to take on an additional member of staff full time, and also to be able to pull in resources from other councils on a pre-standing agreement. Will that have the appropriate amount of democratic coverage, i.e. for us as councillors to be able to identify the need? If that's the case, then I think this is a very good solution to the immediate problem.
Thank you. Okay, do you need to answer that one, or?
I'm not really sure. I've thought I've already answered it, I don't really know what else I can say, it's an interim arrangement.
Would you like me to clarify?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to what you're trying to find out, sorry.
Yeah, you said it'll allow us, yes, it's with regards to short term, and that this was with a view to, and working up to the recruitment of a full-time member of staff, which is completely sensible. But then you went on to say, but it will also allow us to fill in for sickness cover etcetera, because the agreement will already be in place. I'm wondering if those needs arise in the future to cover when we've already got the full staff allowance that has been agreed, then whether that would have, whether that would come back to the council or to a committee to be checked, or whether this is essentially, I don't mean to put it in these terms because I'm not trying to be rude, but a blank cheque that can be utilised at any given time, that's all.
Right, no, so we do have an overtime budget which I put in for us last year. So if we did need to call on this, it would be managed within that budget, so no, if we needed more money, it would come back to council to say we need more money, and it's something that we'd be monitoring. I would suggest that what we do is the HR committee just keeps an eye on this as part of its general workload anyway, and so there should be a councillor eye on it at all times anyway.
Thank you. So we've got councillor Brown's got his hand up, unless he's forgot to put it down from last time. He's put it down now. Does anyone else have any questions on that?
Chair, I did put my hand up, but I was going to ask the same questions that councillor Hallam's already done.
Okay, you don't want to ask them again then, do you, please?
No, Chair.
I'm only joking. Okay, so we need to vote, has anyone else got any questions before we vote on this one? It looked like, was that councillor Frost?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
I think it's an excellent idea to actually use the parish council next door if it were to actually, if we have got a sickness or anything like that, to bring somebody over, they do that in the schools. They have three or four schools where if they're cleaning, they've got one down, they'll borrow one from the other, and they'll do exactly as Sabrina says, it's all budgeted for. So if she says it's going to be budgeted and kept an eye on, I think it's an absolutely excellent idea, well thought out of.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions on that one? Okay, the only question I've got is, if there's any hours that become available, will they be offered first to the staff that we've already got? And then obviously if they can't do it, or whatever the reason is, then it goes to the other people, that was all my question was.
Yes, absolutely, so yes, we'd obviously try and manage it in-house first, but if there's, as I say, a situation where we've got a sick, like we've got a vacancy at the moment and then a holiday coming up, we've got nobody that's of ilk to do the work, so we need to get it from somewhere else.
Appreciate that, thank you, and I think councillor Darby's got his hand up as well.
Yeah, yeah, do you need that seconded, by the way? I'll second that if that's a proposal.
Somebody needs to move it first.
Does anyone want to do that?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay, that makes sense. And councillor Darby's seconded that, is that all right?
Okay, fine.
Thank you both of you, so we take a vote on that one. Are you all ready? And I'll do a little delay in case you need to bang your mics on them or not. So councillor Atherton.
Agree.
Councillor Brown.
Agree.
Councillor Grindel.
Agree.
Councillor Epton.
Agree.
Councillor Kearney.
Agree.
Councillor Jess Hallam.
Oh, agree.
Councillor Hawkins.
For, agree, yeah.
Councillor McGrath.
For.
Councillor Hallam Davies.
For.
Councillor Darby.
For.
Okay, myself is for. I'm gonna have a go at Ross's name here, is it, is it Boffinger? Come on, tell me.
That's just right, for.
Councillor Frost.
For.
Councillor Patterson.
For.
Councillor Needham.
For.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
For.
That's another unanimous, isn't it? We're doing good here. Okay, so let's give the town clerk a second here, right there. So that's another four, so thank you, everybody. So item three is the vacant post, and again, I'll let the town clerk, or if it's councillor Kearney, whichever one needs to speak on this.
Do you want me to introduce it and then councillor Kearney can take over, is that okay?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so this item was considered at the meeting where we wanted to try a new thing and get ourselves a town ranger by utilising the existing vacant post. And this is a post which, so in the caretaker's job description, it includes things like general handyman type work and weeding and looking after the general premises of the council. What we wanted to do, which we talked about earlier in the year, was to extend this to include some work on the allotments as well. Then looking at keeping up some of the stuff in the town centre, sort of bits of cleaning or weeding and bits and bobs, which we've spoken to Brockston Borough Council officers about, and they were encouraging about it. Just to support and enhance the work that they do to get this town looking at its best. So what we've thought to do is use the existing post with the existing salary. And what I've done is prepared a job description and person specification just based on other councils that have this post, which is apparently quite successful in other areas as well. And that's, I'll hand over to you to go through the rest.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't think there's really anything else to say, I think you've sort of covered it anyway there, Sabrina. So yeah, so that's fine. What I would say is that there are different councils across the country that already do this, and I've been looking at some of those, and the difference that they're making in the town is phenomenal, and in fact, if anybody does want to have a quick look later, there are some great examples that have been posted tonight on Crewe Town Council of some of the work that their rangers have been doing around the town, and it does make a massive difference. So the only thing that I think I spotted that I would just like to make a quick comment about in the job description, in the person specification, Sabrina, is there was no specific qualification mentioned, and I just wondered if maybe we could look into putting that in into the person spec. I did speak to councillor Hawkins about this, and he sent me some suggested qualifications. And there's specifically MVQ2 and/or City and Guilds Level 2 in amenity horticulture, or equivalent level qualifications for appropriate professional bodies such as the Royal Horticultural Society. So I'm just wondering if we can add that into the person specification.
For the role. I mean, yes, if council wants to do that, it's whether or not that reduces the amount of people that might be interested in applying for it, as to whether, how many people will have that. And if horticulture is really the key thing for the guy to be, or woman to be doing. But yeah, it's whatever, it's up to council.
Just a thing on that, because that sounds like gardening and stuff and that, and as you know, I don't know nothing about that, and I know councillor Hawkins is an expert. Would it be, could it be put in there that it says preferable? So it doesn't matter if they haven't got it, because you can get the right person, do you know what I mean, but they haven't got that, but they might be willing to learn it or something, I don't know. Because I, obviously, my dad passed away, but I could imagine this kind of role is something my dad would have done if he was alive, because he would have loved it doing all that stuff. But he didn't have them qualifications, he was a mechanic, so I'm sure there's people out there that would be jumping at the chance like this, they might have them qualifications, you know. I don't know what people have got, so would it be like preferable instead of necessary? I don't know, is that the way you'd word it? I don't know.
Yes, there's a section for desirable. Yes, there's a section for desirable.
That's it.
On a person's specification, yeah. I mean, I think the reason that that's a sort of a preference to me is obviously within the job description, it talks about sort of a supervisory role of volunteers and working on that kind of thing. So I just feel like maybe that if that can be backed up with something, or at least a sort of a willingness to do the qualification, then I think that will be useful. I think from my point of view, and again, this is because I'm not a gardener perhaps, but I would feel more comfortable if there was somebody who we knew had the specific relevant background knowledge of that particular area, but also just the health and safety that goes with it as well. Because they are always, the health and safety aspects are always included in those kinds of qualifications. So that's just my feeling on it. I think all the people have got comments.
Couple of hands up here. I'll start with councillor Patterson and then it'll be councillor Brown after that.
I think actually Ella covered it. It's like if we put preferable or desirable, maybe working towards, as the role becomes bigger or we see what is capable, is it something that we could actually provide training for at a later date? You know, that's all I was going to say really, but Ella already said it.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat what you said. I think it was yourself who said about we shouldn't disinclude people who've got the knowledge, but that never got the certificate in it. But I was just going to say, if someone's got the qualifications, can they demand a higher pay and would we pay it?
Okay, and then, so should we do the questions first? So we've got councillor McGrath next and then it's councillor Grindel.
Chair, as you said, I mean, myself and you have tried for many years, without a doubt, to try and sort the planters out anyway. And most of them were handed down from the, was it the Stapford? Who were they? Off the top of my head, I can't remember, Chair, but.
Yeah, it was like Barbara Brook ran, wasn't it?
Yeah, Barbara Brook and all that. And of course councillor Derby. And they've done a fantastic job. I just think that we need, as you quite rightly said there, that you're not a gardener. And no disrespect to anyone, I mean, the only gardening capability we have at the minute is councillor Hawkins. So I think preferably, as you've said, if we get a person who's going to take pride in the town and run a successful gang of volunteers who we can also train up, and then just look what he's willing to accept. And we know he's got the qualifications, I think it's a good way forward.
He or she?
Yeah, he or she, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's brilliant and thank you for them comments. Councillor Grindel?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I have, I do have concerns. I've read this job description and to be honest with you, you would need to be either a superwoman or a superman to actually cover it all. It's starting off here with a person being a caretaker cleaner, I can understand that. I'm not sure about the word ranger, to be honest. If you notice the staff who come from Brockstow, like the guy that cleans up the litter and things, and to see the area that he covers and to see that, and you're expecting this person to do weeding, you're expecting this person to do so much. I think this job description needs looking at again before we go any further. I'm not saying for one minute that we shouldn't have some person doing some more things, but I think this job description needs looking at.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else got any questions before, if the town clerk or if, oh, councillor Hallam?
And then it's councillor. Follow up question really to do with what is an essential qualification and what is a desirable one? I know plenty of people who are handy, capable and competent, that for a variety of different reasons did not, however many years ago it was, achieve A to C in English and maths at GCSE or equivalent level. I'm wondering whether there's any justification specifically for that or whether that should move on to desirable?
Okay, and councillor Needham's got a hand up as well.
I'm sure you can hear and see. Just to point out, following up on the stuff that councillor Grindel said, my partner is actually a park ranger. And I can say that his job description is probably twice as long as this one, because in that role there is litter picking, toilet cleaning, caretaking, gardening, running volunteer groups, chainsaw management, equipment management, the whole lot, the whole shebang. So just to say that, I know it does seem a lot, but there are quite a lot of roles out there that do have this very diverse description. And, you know, he's called a ranger, so I'm not saying he's a superman because he'll get a big edge, but you know, it's there.
Has anyone else got any questions? Because there's still quite a few hands up. But I'm sure everyone that's got their hands up has already spoken. And the way I saw it was that it would be like, the town ranger is kind of leads and it would be relying on volunteers and different groups, organisations. There's loads of them in Stapford and I'm sure they all want to help and support this person. But that's just me. You know, we're an aging population, there's so many volunteers out there in Stapford, it's unbelievable. And I'm sure many would like to help this person, whether it's a, you know, he or she. Yeah, so does anyone else have any questions on that? And then I suppose we best take it to the voter. Oh, sorry, councillor Kearney's got a hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to come back on a couple of those points. I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn my camera on, it's not there. I just wanted to come back on a couple of those points. I think you answered Tim. I think that's the easiest one to answer. I agree with you actually. I don't think A to C in maths is necessarily the be all and end all of this kind of role. I think usually people can prove a level of, a good standard of literacy when they're filling in their application form. So I agree with you, but in my opinion can probably go to desirable. David, just coming back to you about the length of the job description. It probably does look like a lot, given the number of hours that we've put to it, but we have to remember that these are annualised hours. So the idea is that rather than doing 10 hours a week, although that is what the budget is, I think it's 520 hours per year. And the reason we do it like that is because obviously there's going to probably be less work that needs doing in the colder months, particularly with the allotments, but also just because vegetation and weeds and plants and things don't grow so fast in the winter. So the idea is that the majority of that time will be used over the spring and the summer. So I think whilst it might look a lot for the number of hours, you have to imagine that the bulk of those will be done over the summer. So I think it is doable with that structure. And then just coming back to you, Bob, about the higher pay. I think the thing is, is we advertise it what we advertise it at. And I think for somebody that we're asking for somebody with a level two qualification, that's usually a qualification that somebody gets at the start of their career. I'm not necessarily saying that somebody would be at the start of their career when they came in to do this, but I think that if that's what we're saying that we're willing to pay for that particular post, then that's what we're willing to say. What I will concede on though is perhaps that it does need to be in desirable rather than essential. And I think the other thing that we can do as well is, we can probably say that it's reasonable to say this qualification or equivalent experience, so that you'd be able to see in somebody's CV or their application or, you know, the experience that they've got over a number of years. It's absolutely right that somebody might have been doing this job for 20 years and be perfectly qualified to do it, but not actually have ever got the formal qualification. I think with regard to the actual person's specification, maybe what I just wanted to make clearer was that we need to have some level of sort of guarantee of what their background knowledge is and how they've got it. And that usually comes from a qualification, but I suppose it can come from equivalent experience as well.
Thank you. Is that councillor Brown got your hand up again or is that up from before?
No, I've got it up again. One more question to ask, thank you, Mr Mayor. Is, would it be desirable also to have a local resident, somebody of Stapford?
I don't think you can specify where somebody lives. I think you can probably say it's desirable to have somebody that's familiar with, that's already familiar with the local area. But I don't think you can necessarily specify where you want somebody to live to do a role.
Chair, there might move as well.
Chair, just to say on that, I think the clerk will probably back me up there. You're not allowed to, Bob, good idea, if you know what I'm saying, but you're not allowed to say someone preferably from Stapford.
Yeah, somebody from the local area, sounds like a good plan though, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so is everyone all done on that one? Shall we move to the vote on this one? Okay, right, are you ready for the vote?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, are we just going to clarify what changes we're going to make to the job description?
I was just about to say that.
Sorry.
No, I'd forgot, sorry. So okay, so what, so it's as it's written on the agenda plus these little bits now that Ella's going to tell you, because I forgot.
Yeah, so I propose that we accept the proposal for a town ranger post to fill the vacant hours with the following amendments to be made to the person specification. And that would be under the section where qualifications are relevant, which I think is knowledge and understanding, to put in the desirable section a level two qualification in horticulture or equivalent previous experience. And then secondly, to move the A to C in maths across from the essential section to the desirable section.
Okay, thank you. Is that councillor Derby got your hand up and then councillor Brown or are they just up from before?
Apologies.
Councillor Derby, did you want to speak, councillor?
Sorry, but yeah. What we're doing here, by the looks of it, to me, is this is a full time job. You know what I mean? And a town ranger is supposed to be a caretaker. You know, I mean, you're changing the job description, it's a full time, the way you're describing it, it's going to be a full time job. It's a full time job, that is. It's not a, I mean, it's not a simple job gardening. You know, I mean, it's not just a gardener. You know, he's got to be sort of qualified and basically trained really. You put him on to, I think the job description is a little bit too much personally, I think. Yeah, we want a caretaker mainly, the caretaker and just the odd job he's going to be doing as a town ranger. You know, I think it's all a bit bit too much really.
Thank you. As councillor Ross, has he got his hand up again to speak?
I have. I was just going to talk on the A to C. There's various different things now. You'd probably want to put grade C and above, because at one time it was A to C, but now it's A star to C. Or you might want to put your grade C and above or grade four and above, because that's the new the new equivalent of a grade C.
Thank you. Is that everybody done on that one? Okay, so as it is on the agenda plus the additions that councillor Kearney's put forward, and shall we take the vote on that? Right, okay, so councillor Atherton?
I think, sorry, I think I need a second, I don't think anyone's.
Sorry, Ella's proposing this then, so councillor Kearney's proposing this. Does anyone want to second it?
I'll do it.
So that's councillor Frost is seconding that. Jumping the gun there, aren't I? All right, so councillor Atherton? We're moving to the vote now. Is councillor Atherton still there?
Yes, she is.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Brown?
Agreed.
Councillor Grindel?
Abstained.
Councillor Epton? Councillor Kearney?
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam?
Four.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor McGrath?
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davies?
Four.
Councillor Derby? Oh, sorry, four. That's, oh, me, four. Councillor Boffinger?
Four.
Got it right again. Councillor Frost?
Four.
Councillor Patterson?
Four.
Councillor Needham?
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam?
Four.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm guessing that one's passed as well. So thank you, everybody. So is that, is the time clock, are you all right with that one?
Yeah, we just had one abstained, so it's carried.
That's passed, okay. So thank you for that and thank you to everyone.
Just before we move on, Ella, did you manage to hear what Ross said about the grades?
Yes, I did, Bob, thank you. We'll make sure that that's in there.
Okay, and thank you for all the hard work that's gone into putting all that together as well, everybody. So the next item on the agenda is item six, public participation session. I don't think there's anybody on that, I've not been told unless there is.
No, we've not had any notifications, Chair.
Okay, there always. Okay, so item seven is town mayors engagements. That's me. Okay, so there's been four events that I've been to and yeah, I'm enjoying it actually, I'm really enjoying it. So the first one was the food that was being given away at Montrose Court, which was different volunteers and lots of people. There's giving packed lunches away and stuff like that, so that was really good. Thank you to all the people that did that. And then the following event was at St Helen's Church, which was, it was kind of the same, obviously just different volunteers, because it was split over two different groups doing it. And the vic is showing me around the church, which was, you know, I did enjoy that actually, it was nice to be shown around. I've been in there a million times because my mum used to drag me down when I was little, but you know, it was nice to be shown around, so thank you to all them. The next event, I was panicking a little bit because it was the Helpful Bureau and it was music to movement. I thought they were going to try and make me dance. They didn't and I managed to get a nice cup of tea out of them and kind of like stand at the back and watch them. You all know who they are, Helpful Bureau, cracking organisation, they're doing some good stuff. And it was nice to see the folk in there enjoying themselves. And I think apart from myself, there was one other bloke in there and I think he was having a ball, he was loving it and the dancing was really good. So if you want to get involved with that, contact the Helpful Bureau, the music for movement. Yeah, I'm just glad they didn't get me to dance because that would have been embarrassing. And then the next event, which was a few days ago, was at Stapleford Fire Station and that was Ray Burton's retirement. Thirty, you know, thirty something, I can't remember, thirty something years working as a fireman in Stapford, absolutely amazing achievement. I've got all the time in the world for the fire game, my dad used to be at Stapleford Fire Station, so I've got a good.
Mr Mayor, thirty nine years.
Thirty, okay, yeah, a long time then. So he's been there forever. He's done a cracking job and, you know, there was a few people turned up to see him off. And on the back of that one, I just wanted to say thank you to councillor Patterson who turned up with a massive camera and got some cracking photos of everybody. And then also thank you to the mayor of Brockstow, who also came along and presented some things. And I don't think we found out what was in the box she gave him yet, because that was probably a bit private joke between the firemen and them. So yeah, I'm enjoying it and it is, it's good fun. It's nice to get out there. There's some, you know, people are doing good stuff out there in Stapleford and obviously further afield, but Stapleford's what we're here for. And it's, yeah, it's nice to go and see them. The only thing I was a bit disappointed was is that everything that we've been to, you know, the photos were taken, write ups have been sent to the council. And I've, this isn't me having a go at anybody, but I've just had no correspondence back from anything, which was a little bit disappointing because it would have been nice to know that the stuff had been received and, you know, stuff on the website and stuff, so that people of Stapleford know that the town council, we're still active, you know, the town mayor or if it's the deputy mayor who has to step in and all the councillors that's turned and all the councillors that's turning up at these events. It's just not, it's just nice to see that people, you know, in these horrible times we're having at the minute, it'd be nice if they could see what the town council's doing a bit more. I don't know who's in charge of that, but going forward, it'd be nice to see a bit more done on that. Yeah, I'm enjoying it, so if any of, you know, if you want us to turn up at anything, give us a shout, but please try to avoid dancing, because I'm no good at it. So, yeah, that's it on that. So the next item on the agenda is eight, which is planning applications. Obviously, I have declared an interest in planning, because I'm on the planning committee at Brockstow Borough Council. So the first item on the.
Yeah, Chair, if I may, cop hand up as well. I must declare, because I'm on Brockstow Borough Council planning.
Okay, there's some hands up here, actually. I've got councillor Kearney and councillor Brown, are they from before, or did you want to speak on something?
Well, my symbol says my hands lowered, so I don't know what's going on there.
Okay. It might just be from before, that's okay, it's not a problem.
Chair, also me, Brockstow Borough.
Okay. Thank you, councillor McGrath. So the first application. Who's that?
Sorry, I put my hand up for the last item. I just wanted to, I just wanted to let you know that the things are on the website now. I did apologise for this before the meeting, because I hadn't actually been copied in on any of the correspondence. So, yeah, so it's on there now, and so people can see what you've been up to, we've got a proper section set up for you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and thank you for doing that. Okay, so the first is Stapleford North Ward, which is constructor roof extension to create a second floor, two-storey, front side, whatever, 50 Elkiston Road, Stapleford. So has anyone got any comments, concerns, or questions, well, you can't ask questions, I suppose. Any comments or concerns you'd like the town council to raise on the first application? Nope, there's no hands, so that's the town council's got no opinion on that one, I suppose. If you do change your mind afterwards and something does come up, you can always contact Brockstow Borough Council Planning, or one of the ward councillors for them areas, and they can bring them up at the full council meeting, so this isn't your only opportunity to do that, obviously it is as a town council. So the second item on there is construct two detached dwellings and double detached garage on Elkiston Road. Two seventy-one, two, oh, two seventy-one, that's just down the street from me. Does anyone have any comments or concerns they'd like to raise on that application? Nope, okay. And the next one is, oh, there's two more, two more, sorry. The next one is Stapleford South East Ward, constructor seventy-eight bed, the hands are going up, residential care home on the site of the old Magpie pub. So the first hand's gone up is councillor, it's Ross, and then the second one is councillor Needham.
I think there's a general concern about the car parking space there. With sixteen car parking spaces, I'm assuming that we're taking it pretty much by staff. So there's going to be no car parking space for people visiting residents. It's going to be a nightmare around there, I would have thought, in the evenings and at weekends.
Councillor Needham.
Chair, sorry, just to.
And then it will be councillor McGrath.
Okay, yeah, I just want to agree with Ross on that one, yeah, the car parking thing does look a bit of a concern, because I acknowledge that probably the residents haven't got cars. But obviously, they're going to have visitors, which is the issue, because I think Mother's Day and Father's Day, we know that it's very busy around Rockwell Court, because of everybody visiting. Generally, the plan I looked at, and I think it's been done quite considerably. I did look at all the details of it, they've been considerate about the shadows cast, they're keeping a lot of the original hedgerows, the trees, they've thought about it really quite well. My only other little niggel would be, I'm not sure about the shared space for that many residents, but I don't know if that's a planning issue that we can raise or not, or whether that's just like a part of the design. But, yeah, my only other thing is about the car parking, but, yeah, we've covered that.
Thank you, and councillor McGrath?
Chair, as obviously me and you were both lobbied by the gentleman that's put the application in as well, I've also brought that to committee anyway, so I've asked that to go before committee, right, and obviously, I won't make any comments at the minute, but there's some of my concerns as well.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone out, oh, councillor Derby?
Can I speak as well?
You certainly can, after Ray, and then it will be councillor Frost.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to unmute the mic. I've had one or two people asking about what happened to the listed barn that was on that ground. But, you know, I'm not sure, I don't know much about it. They reckoned there was a listed barn at the back there, and they knocked it down. So I just thought I'd better mention that, because one or two's mentioned it to me, and I couldn't answer it, because I don't know.
I don't think there was anything listed on there, because if you look on the Brockstow Borough Council's website, it gives you a list of all the listed buildings in Stapleford, I think one of our councillors lives in one of them, or near one of them. There isn't that many, I don't think there was one of those in Stapleford, I mean, I might be wrong, but we could look on the list again, I don't, I really don't think there was.
Well, I couldn't find it, but I thought I'd better mention it anyway.
Thank you, so councillor Frost, and then it's councillor Hallam afterwards.
I lived next to a nursing home for twenty-seven years when I grew up, and at weekends, when everybody came round, our avenue was an absolute smorgasbord of cars. There was about sixteen or eighteen car parking spaces, the same that's here. And just people parked anywhere and everywhere, in front of people's houses, driveways, everywhere. I think this really needs to be looked at, and we really need to push it forward, to be looked up at the next level, because, you know, it's going to cause problems. I mean, as you rightly said, or as councillor Needham said, the plans themselves are absolutely excellent, they're of a high standard. But it seems like they've gone that far to push that through, and forgotten about the small things. And I think they really need to be reminded of that. Thank you.
Thank you, so councillor Tim Hallam, and then I think councillor Brown's got his hand up again.
Thanks, just a response to councillor Derby's point. I don't recall seeing anything relating to listed buildings at the stage where that would have been brought to our attention, which was during the demolition phase, rather than the phase that we're currently at, which is the detailed planning application. So I may be, I may be wrong, I may have missed it, or I may have misremembered it. But I think if it, if it has happened, then it's already gone through the process, and that's not the process that we're talking about now. This is the next phase.
Thank you, and councillor Brown, did you want to second it?
Yes, indeed, at every planning thing, it always comes up about parking, but I think I'm right in thinking, at part, we can't consider parking, even though it's always a bugbear, am I correcting that?
And I would have said, I think we could consider anything, it's whether anyone listens or not, isn't it? Okay, so does anyone else have any comments or concerns for the site of the former Magpie pub?
Yeah, can I just speak, Chair?
You certainly can, councillor Patterson.
Yeah, I mean, it's just about the parking again, I'm sorry, I'm putting the camera on, it's all these buttons. Yeah, I think we've got to consider, it's a really busy road as well. There was an accident right near there very recently. So, you know, this is the junction coming up off Brookhill and New Eton's. So, yeah, you know, we've got to consider the parking there, and of course, this Bardills Island. If you're getting cars parking up and along there, it creates tailbacks, you know, especially at the weekends, when it gets quite busy along that road. So that's all, really.
Thank you. Anybody else, and then we'll just give the time clock a minute to get them notes written up, and, because obviously that's all got to be sent off to Brockstow. Do you need a minute, or you okay there?
I'm fine, Chair, if you want to, if that's what council wants to do, is to just raise those concerns, I can put those through.
Chair, you're right, really fast, councillor McGrath.
Chair, just on the listed building that councillor Hallam brought up as well, and councillor Derby. They changed years ago, when you were all young people, right, we had the same with the Warren. Right, when I first became a councillor for Warren Arms. And there was a belief there that also there was a listed, I think it were a stage, stables there. But I'm led to believe, I'm sure the clerk checks it, that they changed the listed building view of things. So I'm just saying, as councillor Hallam said, I don't think that the barn on the Magpie was listed.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, did you want to come back, or is that just up from before?
Just up from before, sorry.
It's all right, it's not a problem, thank you. Okay, so if we've got all them comments, that's that one. So then the next application to consider is Stapleford South West Ward, which is install a twenty-metre-high monopole and equipment cabinets, oh, it's Vodafone, and this is at land at Palmer Drive, Stapleford, so that's off Bezzell Lane, just in case you don't know. Cornerstone and Vodafone, I'm guessing it's five G mast, I might be wrong there, but, you know, have a look, I'm sure it is. Does anyone have any comments or concerns on that?
Chair.
Councillor McGrath.
I don't know whether, well, I think we're all aware, right, where Bezzell Lane is. Well, most of us, sorry, I don't mean it that way. But I spoke to planning about this. My concern is that they're putting an application in, and if we've heard today HS2 is going ahead, why are they putting it where most of us presume, or we think is going to be one of the main roads into the HS2 station? So I'm surprised, right, that a, there must be some litigation on it. If we're allowing them to build it there, or put the mast up, surely in, I don't know, ten years, fifteen years' time, it's going to be pulled down, I mean, that's all I'm saying on that matter.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or concerns on that one? Okay, thank you for that, so that's that item finished. So the next item on the agenda is, let me scroll up a bit, item nine, appointment of deputy leader of the council. I suppose, do we need to introduce this, or does anyone have any comments and concerns, or? Any hands up, okay, councillor Hallam?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's still an unresolved item that we've already looked at the on the minutes from the annual council meeting last time, which is that the proposal by councillor Kearney and seconded by councillor Patterson to abolish the position of leader and deputy leader has been referred back to the Finance and General Purposes Committee. But there hasn't been a Finance and General Purposes Committee to look at that, discuss that, make a recommendation back to full council yet. So my recommendation is that we don't resolve this item and potentially blow time discussing it and voting on it as a council until the outstanding question mark over the position itself is resolved.
No, that makes sense to me as well. I was going to say, is everybody happy that, does anyone want to talk on that, or? Does anyone have anything to say? Sorry, councillor Grindel, and then it's councillor Needham, and then it's councillor Kearney.
If, 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 obviously, if councillor Hallam, Tim Hallam is proposing that, then I will second it, Chair.
Okay, so councillor Kearney, and then councillor Needham.
Thank you, Chair. I actually think that an outstanding question means that we really, until we've answered that question, we should stick to the current policy. I am still of the opinion that we shouldn't have a leadership, but I think if we're putting a leader in position, which we have done with Theresa, and we're utilising that position currently, then it's only fair to Theresa that she should have a deputy, and that that deputy can support her in her role.
Okay, thank you, and councillor Needham?
Hello, yeah, I was just going to make the same point that Ella has, and also, you know, it has been discussed that while I'm in this role, until a decision's made, if I do become ill or incapacitated in any way, we are in a bit of a mess. Obviously, we're in the light of Covid at the moment, we really don't know what's going to happen, so I think we should have a deputy at the moment.
I hope you don't get poorly, and I hope, you know, you stay fit and healthy, so. Okay, so I suppose that's all there is on that one, so appointments, so what's the next bit on that then? Obviously, someone's got, well, actually, there's a proposal been put forward and seconded, wasn't there, so we're going to have to vote on that, aren't we?
I didn't formally propose it, Mr Mayor.
Oh, sorry, because councillor Grindel said he seconded it, sorry.
No, I appreciate councillor Grindel seconding for what might provisionally have been a proposal, but but I'm fine to carry on, just thought it was expedient to not do so at this stage.
No, not a problem, so I suppose then, are we asking for nominations, I guess? Is that what we're going to have to, aren't we, really?
Yes, yes, that's where we go to next.
Do we have any nominations for deputy leader of Stapleford Town Council? And it looks like we've got councillor Needham to speak, and then councillor Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate councillor Brown to be my deputy.
Okay, thank you, and councillor Brown, did you want to accept that before we asked for one to second it, I suppose?
No, hold on, I'm trying to switch this on, yeah, I think I switched on. Yes, indeed, Theresa's approached me, and I thought, as I got her into this mess in the first place, because Dave Pearce and I approached her to be a councillor, we didn't know what was going to turn out, and as Theresa says, if she becomes sick or something, then we need to have a continuity plan, really. All of you know me, and know me if I can do it or not, and if it turns out to be rubbish, then there's always May. Always the vote as to whether we continue with the format of having a leader or deputy leader. That's about it, really.
Okay, so does anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's proposed by councillor Needham, seconded by councillor Frost, and Bob's accepted that, obviously depending on the vote, so that's that one. So I suppose, is there any more nominations before we go to the vote? Nope, okay, so what you're voting on now then is councillor Brown to be deputy leader of Stapleford Town Council, and to support Theresa, and like I said, hopefully, she's okay, and, you know, we don't want anyone getting poorly, do we? So, right, we'll start at the top, so councillor Atherton.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four, I suppose I'd have to vote myself.
Wrong not to, councillor Grindel.
Yeah, four.
Councillor Epton.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam.
Chair, my internet went out then, and I was stuck, can we start again, because I didn't catch any of the votes that you started.
Okay, so hopefully they want to change their minds. Councillor Atherton.
Four. Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Epton.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam.
Four.
Councillor John Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four, and Bob, you better keep running.
Councillor Hallam Davies.
Four.
Councillor Derby.
Four.
Oh, councillor McCrae, yeah, definitely, and well done, Bob, if you get it. Councillor Boffinger.
Four.
Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four, thanks for stepping up, Bob.
Councillor Needham.
Four, absolutely.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
Four.
Wow, we're not unanimous, well done, and congratulations, so we've now got.
Don't know about congratulations, but I'll do my very best, and thank you very much for your support of me.
And I'm sure you will, so, yeah, congratulations to councillor Bob Brown, who's now deputy leader of Stapleford Town Council, so thank you for that. So the next item on the agenda is item ten, which is honours for community service. And this is to consider the attached report of the town clerk, which was sent out in your agenda pack. I suppose we'll let the town clerk introduce this one, and then if anyone's got any questions or whatever, bang your hand up, and then we can do it like that, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, there's not really much else to add to the report, it's basically something I was.
There's not really much else to add to the report, it's, it's basically something I was asked to look into because of a local community figure who we've already mentioned this evening, having done some excellent service for the community of Stapleford. And it was just a way to recognise what people have done. Obviously, we can't give individuals money, but we can give this particular honour. And it was just to set up a policy, basically, that would help us to be able to do that.
Okay, so does anyone, I know Theresa's got her hand up, is that for this or is that from before? And then has anyone got any questions?
No, I know it was from before.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tim Hallam.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I like the idea of this. The idea of using reserves, as far as I'm concerned, is one of having a, having a big pot of cash so that should something urgent and unpredictable come up, we have some ability to react to it. I'm fully prepared to accept this, but I think it needs to be properly budgeted for. I don't want to support it in its current state because it's not the right time to do it. This is not an urgent matter. I think that since there's a budgetary consideration, this, this should be a recommended to council for approval in the, in next year's budget. When, when then we can do it properly, it seems to me that there's no, there's no logical reason to do it now as much of a good idea as it, as it may be. Later on in the report, there are other suggestions for ideas like local hero medals and stuff like that. I personally think that's taking it a bit far. I think the, I think the idea of a limited set of awards, limited to the amount that can be active at any given time, is a very good way of making sure they're not just handed out like cookies.
Okay, so thank, thank you councillor Hallam, councillor Patterson.
And I think, I mean, I know it says to pay from the reserves, but I think we've got an underspend. You know, we've, we've not done the garden competition, we didn't do VE Day or VJ Day. And I think this is something that we could look at doing now. I mean, this is something that the town council's been able to do, look at like a, an honours list kind of thing, if you want to put it that way. And it's never been looked into before. We are trying to move the town council forward in lots of ways. And I just think this, this is a little one that we could achieve and people would like to see.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And councillor Grindle.
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. I have, I, I would like to say one thing about this regarding the finance side of it. Now, I agree that an honours type thing would be very nice. But you see, when it comes to the finance, you cannot borrow from Peter to pay Paul. What happens to the money, the finance, which is not spent this year? At the end of March, goes back into reserves once the end of the year has happened. Now, yes, it's possible that this should be brought up at the, at the budget meeting with no problem. But that would then start from April the 1st next year. That's the way the finances work and, and I don't want to be a killjoy here neither.
Chair, just to, just to brief, just to brief, sorry, it's Tim for his hand up, sorry, I don't.
No, councillor Hallam and then councillor, no, sorry, councillor McGrath, I think they've left their hands up, haven't they?
Just a, just a quick one on this, I mean, I, I both understand what councillor Grindle and councillor Hallam have said, right, around the financing, obviously that can be discussed at further meetings, but obviously the first recipient, to be fair, is Ray Burton, which to be fair, what Ray's done for the community for over the last 40 years and probably more, because he still works at George Spencer, doesn't he, or as a caretaker there?
He does, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, and then you have to look at perhaps recipients like children and even yourself, Mr Mayor, if you carry on being happy, right? It, it, it's just, it's just a thing that, that I think we need to address, right? And I think it'd be good for the town. So if there is financial implications and if you're going to give people a reward, fair enough. Obviously, that makes should be discussed at full council about what we're going to do. But certainly the first recipient in particular, right? Ray Burton obviously does deserve a bit of recognition from the town council.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would have said there is just, just be careful who, who, because we don't want it to sound like things are done deals because it, it, looking at the paperwork, it does say it has to be voted for by the councillors. And yeah, thank you for the other thing you said, I always try and be happy, but I don't think it would be, I, I'm sure it says in there and it wouldn't be right neither. That it's not something we'd be giving to councillors, standing councillors and, and stuff like that. I mean, I, I don't think that would be right anyway, but I'm sure it says in there, that's not what we do anyway. It's like Brock's though, isn't it? People went left and that, but yeah, I, I.
Chair, you, you have to look at, I think you have to form a criteria, don't you? I mean, obviously, you look at teachers that teach within the community, you look at helpful bureau you've mentioned and, and people like that and not standing councils, quite rightly, as you said. But the simple things that we can look at, which will make it better, that we are recognising what people do within the community. We were elected to serve the community, we might do it wrong, we might do it right, I mean, that's politics, but at the end of the day, there is people within the community. As Ray said to me, actually, he said, no, when the people have asked me to be a councillor, he says, well, I don't know how you all put up with, but that was right.
Yeah.
May I say something?
Yeah, councillor Frost and then I think it's councillor Hallam after that, I think his hand's up, so.
If we look at the freeman title, which would be an honorary freeman, it dates back quite a few centuries. And originally, you used to be able to feed your livestock on common ground. Now, I'm not sure we've got any common ground in Stapleford anymore. But it's a really good title and I think it's something, it doesn't mean that much per se, but to be given out by a council to somebody who the whole community recognises, I think is a splendid idea. It's fallen into disrepute and I think it's sadly fallen into disrepute. It's something that we could be brought back in and it's, well, to the council if they decide to or not, but I personally think it's a, a very good idea.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Hallam, I think.
Thanks. Yeah, the only issue that I've, that I've got with it is basically the recommendation number three on here. If that were to, which is that, that says for anybody that's not reading the, the agenda, it says that a budget of a thousand pounds be set aside from reserves to cover the initial setup costs. The, for reasons I've already explained, I don't, I don't support taking that money out of reserves at the moment because this is not an urgent matter. However, if, if item three on the recommendations were changed to that a recommendation, that the council recommends Finance and Resources Committee to include this in the next budget, then I would be really delighted to support this motion.
Thank you. So is that, is that something we're proposing? Because then you're going to need a second for that before it gets voted on.
Mr Mayor, I will second that.
Okay, so we've, we've got a proposal.
I keep clicking the wrong button, I keep putting my hand up and down rather than amusing a microphone, sorry, Mr Mayor, that's, yeah, sorry.
It's okay, it's keeping the town clerk and myself busy looking at who's doing what, so yeah, thank you for that. So, so the proposal is then that recommendation three is changed to the words what councillor Hallam just said about doing it for the budget for, to be next year, wouldn't it? So we're going to vote on that. So we, we, that's been proposed by councillor Hallam, seconded by councillor Grindle. So if we start, we start at the top, so councillor Atherton. Councillor Atherton still with us?
She is, she's just done muted then.
Oh, here we go, yeah, okay.
Oh, she's muted again.
Okay.
I've said four and it doesn't have to be monitored.
Okay, four, okay, councillor Brown.
Yes, old freeman could also drive geese through the middle of town, I hope that's not a taps of this, but four.
Is that a four? Okay, councillor Grindle. Councillor Grindle.
Four.
Okay, councillor Eptum.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Kiernan.
Against.
Okay, councillor Jess Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Against.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Councillor McCrae, oh, that's me, four. Councillor Buffinger.
Against.
Councillor Frost.
Yeah, it's an against for me, I'm afraid.
That's okay, councillor Patterson.
Against.
Okay, councillor Needham.
Abstained.
Okay, and councillor Tim Hallam.
Four.
Okay, so just give the town clerk a second. Sorry, I keep drinking on the camera, I've got the worst headache in the world, it's, it's, I wouldn't normally do it, my head's pounding.
Right, so we've got 10 for the motion, five against and one abstention, so the motion is carried.
Okay, so that's that. And then now we need to, to vote on the rest of it, don't we, as, as, without the change, sorry, including the changes to three, is that what we're doing?
Oh, sorry, I thought we were, he was, he'd moved it, but with that change.
Sorry, yeah, they did with that change and that's what we've done, sorry. Yeah, okay, right, okay, thank you for everybody on that one and, and thank you for all the work that's gone into that one.
Mister Mayor, can I just comment that I was under the impression that we were just voting on the amendment? Because I'm unequivocally in favour of the, of the motion. I wasn't in favour of the amendment.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I thought we was doing.
Yeah.
Did everyone else think that? Because that's what I thought we was doing.
Richard, I'm happy for it to be interpreted either way. So, so yes, it's the, I'm happy to, you know, not, I'm happy for that to, for the previous vote to be interpreted as a suggested amendment.
Well, I, can I just say I'm not being, as I actually approached and put this forward, and there is no way I would vote against putting this into action. So I would like to vote on the motion as well, please.
That's what I thought we was doing, perhaps, that, that's my fault, perhaps, I didn't say it properly. I actually thought that's what we was doing.
Point of clarification, Mr Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
What I was actually saying there though was that, was that I am happy that, that, that the initial vote was considered to be an amendment and that we now vote again as a substantive motion.
Okay, that's what, yeah, that's what I thought, sorry, that, that's my fault, it was, I didn't word it better.
Mr Mayor, I, I agree with that statement.
Yeah, no, okay, because, because like, like as councillor Patterson said, if something she supports, it was just not that motion and we don't want it looking like she doesn't support something when, when she does. So, so now we're taking the second vote and like I said, it was, it was my fault, I should have worded it different. We're, we're taking the second vote, which is to support it as it is now with the changes that, that's already been voted on. So it's the actual honours for the community service, so that's what we're doing. So we're starting again at the top, so councillor Atherton.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Grindle.
Four.
Councillor Eptum.
Four.
Councillor Kiernan.
Four.
Councillor Hallam. Oh, sorry, Jess Hallam, sorry.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Me, yeah, four. Councillor Buffinger.
Four.
Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Definitely four.
Thank you. Councillor Needham.
Four.
Councillor Hallam, Tim Hallam.
Four.
Okay, so that's unanimous, so thank you for everybody for that and, and thank you for everybody that put the work into that as well. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we're getting there slowly, is item 11, which is clerks' reports. And then if we do allotments, small business grant funds, we've got Sunset Salute VJ Day, oh, I forgot to mention that in the mayor's things. And then obviously there's the volunteers in the town square. So yeah, I'll mention my bit when, when we come to see. So if the town clerk wants to go through A, B, C and D, and then if anyone's got any questions, you can do that at the end, if that's okay.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. So item A, I do actually need you to vote to agree to this, but the work has been done. So basically the fencing at the back of the U-Lam Lane allotment, which actually belongs to the landlord of the flats behind, it's part of where the car park backs on to the allotment. It fell down basically and our fence in front of that was inadequate to secure the site. So I've had to get some fencing put up and we've put some strong fenced it up to secure the, the site for the plot holders, because they were all very concerned that things were going to get stolen. So the cost of that was £885.72, which we can pay for from the allotments reserves fund, which is there for, for this sort of thing, basically. And just generally, we've had a lot of interest in the allotments, three of our sites are now full. The Albany site is increasing in occupancy, as is the Petefield one. There's still vacancies on those, but, but things are looking up in that area.
Wow, thank you. Should we do a vote on that first and then get that one out of the way?
Yes, if you would.
So, so we're just voting for retrospective permission, obviously it needed doing because we didn't want someone breaking in and nicking all of Jan's tomatoes, because they are very nice, but handle the people that use the allotments, of course. So yeah, we're just voting on that, so councillor Atherton.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Grindle.
Four.
Councillor Eptum.
Four.
Councillor Kiernan.
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Me, four. Councillor Buffinger.
Four.
Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four.
Councillor Needham.
Four.
And councillor, Tim Hallam.
Four.
So that, that's unanimous again, so thank, thank you for everybody and, and thank you to the town clerk and the staff for getting that sorted out so quick as well, thank you. So the next item is the Small Business Grant Fund.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this was just an update from the last meeting, there were questions over whether we were actually entitled to the grant funding that we'd been given. Thankfully, NALC actually lobbied the government and said, look, we need some answers on this because everybody's doing it differently. And it turns out that we are indeed entitled to that money. So we've had £10,000 come to us, basically, for, for basically just having small business rates relief on our building. So there's, there's extra money in the coffers.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments, concerns or questions on that one?
Clerk.
Councillor McGrath, I think, and then it looks like councillor Brown's got his hand up as well.
Clerk, yeah, well, well done, I think we deserve it anyway, right? I mean, I think I've spoke to you, I won't call you flower, I spoke to you Sabrina and all that and, and obviously Ella, before she, when she was leader. I think also as we, we must be aware, have, have we looked at Rhino and Helpful Bureau? Have all of their income has helped the council to have really not a bad reserve and this, that and the other. So are, are they both happy about what they've accepted as well, Sabrina?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we gave a grant of £5,000 to the Helpful Bureau anyway to assist them with delivering some of their projects, some of their grant funding had fallen through. And so that's effectively the equivalent of their rent anyway. And with Rhino, obviously we can't give him money, but I did help him apply for his own grant and which he was successful in getting. So they were supported and as far as I'm aware, they're, they're quite happy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Did councillor Brown have his hand up? I'll take that as a no. Councillor Brown, did you want to speak? Oh, it's gone down again now, I'll take that as a no. Okay, the next one is Sunset.
Chair, just a quick one then. If we, if we of the council would like to thank, I think it was councillor Marshall, councillor Carr and, and the, and the people at Brock's though that have done so well, Sabrina, to help everyone out through that, where everyone were panicking, right? I don't mean panicking, I think you understand what I'm saying through Covid. and the people at Brockstow that have done so well, Sabrina, to help everyone out through that, where everyone were panicking, right, I don't mean panicking, I think you understand what I'm saying through Covid. If we would send a letter and thank Brockstow Borough for what they've done.
Four.
Because I know yourself, and I know, that there was lots of problems there, uh, uh, and there were a lot of misunderstanding that who could get what. Just a thank you letter, my standard's in good stead.
No, it's always, no, that's, that's a good idea, councillor McGrath, um, I bet you can even go as a cheap stamp, can't you? So is that, is that something the town clerk, you, you'd be all right doing that, yeah?
Yeah, I can say just thank you, I'll send it to the chief executive, is that all right?
Sounds good to me, is that okay, councillor McGrath?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Not a problem. Councillor Hallam, and then, sorry councillor Tim Hallam, and then it's councillor Grindel.
Yeah, this is, uh, we've mentioned this on the town council before, the revs and benefits team, uh, that had to deal at very short notice with the, uh, with, with the grant funding for, for businesses in Brockstow, and the economic development team who took a lot of inquiries when there was a massive amount of uncertainty, not that that, some of that uncertainty hasn't gone away, um, but, uh, yeah, the, uh, the, the team at Brockstow, those two teams at Brockstow have been absolutely stalwart, uh, supporting our business community. Um, it has been minuted in previous minutes of the, of this council to, uh, to, to give thanks to them, and I was going to say, if it requires, if councillor McGrath's, um, recommended letter required a second, uh, so that it can come officially on behalf of this whole council, I would be delighted to do so.
Thank you for that, councillor Hallam, and councillor Grindel.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, regarding, uh, what, um, John and Tim have said, uh, is quite right. Um, but what I think I'd like to see added, or a separate letter, whichever way you'd like to do it, Mister Mayor, is that, um, to praise all staff at Brockstow, um, for the super job that they've been doing, and still doing. And obviously, um, we wish to praise our own staff here, um, but I think it'd be nice with a letter to go to Brockstow, thanking their staff. Um, they, a lot of them have worked overtime without pay, they've done so much like, um, at, at Brockstow, and so a lot of people in Stapleford have done the same, but I think we ought to send a thank you letter to Brockstow Borough Council, all staff.
Thank you, that, that, that's appreciated, thank you very much. Um, so the next, I, does anyone else know that's everyone's hands down, is it, so the next thing is Sunset, I can't even say it to you. Sunset salute for VJ Day, I just wanted to say something quickly, because I did forget to do it in the mayor's, um, update, but we, we got invited to that, um, the, the leader of the town council, Theresa, came along, it wa- it was limited who could be there because of, obviously what's going on. It was all like hush, hush and whatnot, because a- as much as it would have been nice to have the whole of Stapleford there, and I'm sure, given the opportunity, that they, they would do, um, but we just couldn't do that, so it, it, it was a very, I think the word somber event, there was, there wasn't that many people there. Uh, there was people passing by that kind of like jumped at the back and then stood around the sides and that, which was nice. And we, we managed, we was put down a bouquet of flowers, which was really nice, and it was nice to see them there for so long as well. Um, so yeah, that, that was all I wanted to say on that, and, and, and thank you, because that, that was, yeah, it was, and, and I'm sure councillor Needham enjoyed that as well. And then obviously if the town clerk needs to say anything on that.
It's, it, Mister Mayor, sorry, it was just, uh, it was just to let the council know that I'd been involved in, uh, sort of organising this, uh, clandestine, uh, meeting, basically. Uh, and unfortunately, as you say, we couldn't, uh, tell everybody about it, because it was limited, uh, due to the Covid, um, and that was, that was really all I was just updating on.
Thank you, and then D is volunteers on the town square, which is another verbal update from the town clerk.
Uh, yes, so this was just to, uh, this is related to the, the previous item, uh, which was the last minute, um, effort, uh, which was led by the, uh, leader of the council, uh, basically to try and make the square look a bit nicer, um, for the Sunset Salute, uh, event, because obviously we couldn't have everybody there. Uh, so it was just to let you know that I'd been involved in, uh, organising, uh, the risk assessments and, uh, which Theresa wrote, uh, and talking to, uh, Tim Crawford to get it all sorted, um, and I think you've all probably seen the results, and there were some place, uh, uh, pictures on Facebook of the volunteers that had, uh, been invited to, to help with that.
Okay, and can I, can I also say thank you to everyone involved in that, because it, yeah, it looks, it looks really nice, and it still looks really nice, I don't know how you did it, but yeah, well done, everybody. Uh, and thank you as well, and then also councillor Needham's got her hand up to speak as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, apologise to those people who I didn't invite to take part in it. Um, it was, again, one of those things where it was a very last minute thing, we had to have limited numbers, so I don't want to, anybody to feel left out, but it was just a, a grab a handful of people quickly to do that, but, um, hopefully in the future there'll be oppo- possibilities for everybody to get involved again. Okay, thank you.
Uh, tha- that's appreciated, thank you, and, and thank you for the town clerk, for them verbal updates and, and the work you've done on the back of that as well. So the next item-
Cheers, Mister Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Councillor McGrath.
I'd like to thank Theresa yourself and all that for, for doing that, what you did, but, uh, do the pu- do the general public know that obviously it's, it's, um, on Remembrance Day as well, right, that it, it is still going to be limited? So I think we need to make plans around that, just so, uh, whether it's secret or not, I totally agree, it's got to be secret in this current, current climate.
Not now.
Pardon?
It's not now.
No, no, but I, I mean, well, there's, there's no August and fair, there's no goose fair, there's no this, there's no that, so I think, um, eventually some of that needs to be made public, so we can plan proper, don't we?
Yeah, definitely. Thank, thank, thank you for that as well. So the next item on the agenda is item twelve, which is a finance update, there's a A, B and C. Uh, the first one is your summary of receipts and payments to date, there's a schedule attached. The second one is approval of payments, uh, to be circulated, I think we, we've had that, haven't we, since, since this-
Yes, we have, yeah.
And then C is the balances, the currents and reserves, so if the town clerk wants to do, do that bit.
Uh, there's, there's not really anything else to add, um, it just needs the approval, so if anybody's got any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Okay, so has anyone got any questions on the finance update?
Uh, Mister Mayor.
Uh, hang on a second, it's councillor Patterson, and then it's councillor Grindel.
Hi, um, Sabrina, could I just ask, um, what the unspent grant was for groundwork that was returned? What it was applied for, um, and what it should have been used for?
Yes, that was the neighbourhood plan, uh, grant, which we got, it, we, we applied for it quite late last year, um, to pay for the consultant, um, and with the Covid and everything, he, he didn't get around to finishing the work, and he didn't, uh, invoice us for it, so we had to give it back, it's just part of the process. So we've applied for it again this year, uh, to pay for that work that he had already started doing, um, and we've got that grant, and he's now invoiced for that work, so, uh, we should be able to spend it this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Grindel.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, I know that the town clerk is aware of this. Could you just explain to the councillors, please, town clerk, reference the five thousand and coming from reserve, but goes into one three seven, can you just explain that to other councillors, please?
Yes, so, um, this is the, uh, on the payments report, it's listed as being section one three seven, um, and it, it is basically, it is a section one three seven payment, but we, we agreed that we would pay it from reserves, so when I'm coding it in the accounts, I have to code it to section one three seven, but what you won't see in this particular report is then the journal transfer that happens behind the scenes to update that budget, so that it's now, it's not three thousand pounds anymore, it's eight thousand pounds, so it doesn't look like we've overspent the budget, because we've added more money to our budget, if that makes sense, uh, but obviously, any questions, I can answer that.
I, I, Mister Mayor, I totally agree what the town clerk is saying, and I'll, I'm quite happy with that, yes.
Okay, thank you, and does councillor Patterson, did you have another question?
No, no, I forgot to put my hand down.
That's okay, I, I just don't want to miss anybody, that's all. Um, so do, is, is this just like a noting report, or do you need us to vote on anything?
Uh, we, I do need you to vote on item B to approve the payments.
Okay, so is everyone happy with that then? So we're going to take a vote, we approve the payments to thirty first of August twenty twenty, all included in documents pack, um, so we'll start the voting, so councillor Ath-
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Epton.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Oh, I've lost everybody again. I got to Kearney, can you hear me? I got to councillor Kearney.
Okay, uh, councillor Kearney was four. Councillor Jess Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Councillor McCrae, oh, that's me, four. Councillor Boffinger.
Four.
Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four.
Councillor Needham.
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
Four.
Okay, that's unanimous again, thank you, everybody. So the next item on the agenda, it, oh, sorry, oh, okay, sorry. The next item on the agenda is item thirteen, which is appointment committees, and this just says to consider a request by the leader of the council to be added to the finance and general purposes committee. Uh, oh, I've got councillor Grindel already on that one, crack it up quick.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor, uh, yes, actually, um, the leader of the council in the past has always, um, allowed to come to any meeting, committee meeting, that he or she wishes. Um, it previously, uh, the actual leader doesn't get a vote, but, um, she's entitled to sit in on any committee meeting in all shapes and sizes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does, does anyone else have anything on this?
Yes, please.
Uh, councillor Frost.
I think it's best to put the coun- uh, the town leader, sorry, I'm breaking my teeth in for any of the, Mr Sittick, I'm about later. Um, to put her back into that position, um, I think it would, um, yeah, it's really a good idea, and that's my own thoughts on it, obviously, thank you.
Okay, so we've got councillor Needham, and then it's councillor Kearney, please.
I thi- I think it's actually Ella first.
Oh, okay, we can do that then, councillor Kearney.
Yeah, thank you, just wanted to echo what Simon said, I think it's important to have, um, the leader of the council on there as a voting member. Um, and I recall last year, um, when I was leader and I was, um, on the finance committee, um, councillor Grindel actually, actually suggested it needed to be a member of the current administration, um, ideally the leader, who was the chair, which obviously is a, is a, is a, is a decision for the committee going forward. Um, but I, I think that that, that's still an important, um, uh, concept to honour.
Okay, thank you, so if I go councillor Brown, and then we'll come to councillor Needham after, if that's okay.
Yeah, thanks, Mister Mayor, um, yeah, uh, I can't remember it being standing orders, and, but then again, there is a big document, as, as the leader could go to any meeting, uh, but not be a voting member.
Okay, thank you, and then it's councillor Needham.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I thought we had a, 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 an agreement that, uh, any councillor can go to any meeting but not be a voting member, not just the leader, but, um, obviously I thought you needed to be a committee member to vote, I might be wrong on that.
Okay, thank you, so, um, do we need someone to propose this and second it and then vote on it, is that how we're doing this? Or is it, is it just as it is on the paperwork?
I'll propose it.
Just one second in that.
And I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
I've got David first.
Proposed in second. Okay, yeah, that, so that's proposed in second, the, the leader of the council, he's added to the finance and general purposes committee, that, that's as a committee member. Does Ella, does councillor Kearney want to speak again, before we go to the vote?
No, apologies, Chair.
Okay, no, that's okay, um, okay, so we'll start at the top, so it's councillor Atherton.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Epton.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Oh, I've lost everybody again, can you? Sorry, I got to Kearney again, and then it cut out.
Yeah, yeah, it was four.
Yeah.
That's my one.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor- Is that me?
Four.
Councillor McCrae, four. Councillor Boffinger.
Oh, you're doing so well, at four.
So, I apologise. Uh, councillor Frost.
Don't worry.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four.
Councillor Needham.
Four.
And councillor Tim Hallam.
Abstain.
Okay, thank, thank you, so that's, um, that, that, that's passed, hasn't it, for that one, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you for that, so, so the next one is the co- hang on a minute, the co- yeah, we've done that. So the next one is item fourteen, which is the corporate plan to consider and discuss the attached draft corporate plan. So I think that's probably the town clerk coming back with that one.
Uh, this is actually proposed by, uh, the leader of the council, so I'd hand over to her to introduce it, please.
Okay, so councillor Needham, if you want to, uh, introduce the corporate plan, and everyone's had a copy of that in their, um, documents.
Oh, I've just put the, the TV on. Um, yeah, so apologies, because it's the first one of many, uh, long documents, because I, I don't do brevity, do I? Um, obviously, this is the first time we've done anything like this, and this was actually taken, um, this is the first draft of a document, uh, the format of which I've borrowed from Dunstable Town Council, and it's basically outlining the ideas that people have said that they'd like to take forward over the next three years. Um, so it's kind of structured as, you know, I've, I've borrowed the structure from what, what Dunstable did, but, you know, obviously it can be changed if people really don't like it. Um, so it's divided into sort of four sections, um, about economy, uh, working in the community, environmental sustainability, and then, uh, working like to get the council, uh, improved, uh, and up to, up to speed. So there are a, a series of little, um, actions. Uh, a lot of them have come from what I've discussions with councillors of the kind of things that they'd like to do over the next three years. Uh, some of them have come about because it's things that we should really be doing, you know, when you look at the documentation from the Good Counsellors Guide, et cetera, of like, what a good council should be doing, um, and it's basically looking at, uh, expanding a little bit on the provision that we, uh, we've done. Uh, because I've had a few conversations with people, and I think everybody kind of agrees that they'd like to do more, and like to see the council doing more for the community. So, uh, there's a lot of stuff in there, so, um, I'm, I'm happy to take questions and, and have the discussion about this, but obviously I'm appreciating that it's now gone nearly, nearly ten to nine. And so what I would suggest, uh, sort of like going forward, is if we can have a discussion now, but I'm happy to do another draft of this for the next meeting, and if people want to send me comments or pick up on any, any details or anything, um, later on, and they can email it to me, and then I'll get an, another draft ready, uh, for the council meeting in October, so I'll, I'll hand it over back to the Chair, Mister Chairman, uh, for you to take comments.
Yeah, so it's a word. So, it's, it's a doc- in, like you say, so, then you want to email across to, to councillor Needham, please. Does anyone have a, ins or comments you'd, you'd make on this, I'd say it is a, it's just a noting report, isn't it? Councillor.
I don't know if it's frozen or not.
I don't know if it's just Richard's feed or not, I, I can hear Bob quite well.
Sorry Ri- sorry, Richard, uh, did you say, uh, could go? I think Richard.
Yeah, I think it is Richard's feed, that's glitchy.
Uh, is this?
Is it?
Bob Brown's breaking up, Mister Mayor.
Ah. And my computer is.
Well, I can hear you, Bob, so, um-
All I was going to say is that's a really huge piece of work to read, so, well, nice one, but, um, I mean, each of those sections is like a proposal in itself, so it will be a, um, a tall order, but let's see what we can get done for the town.
Do you all hear me again now?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so that's it then, isn't it? The leader of the council concerns and that.
Chair, just to everything seems freezing, mate.
I wonder if you turn your camera off, Mr Mayor, and maybe it'll help with the bandwidth. See if we can hear you then properly.
Stick that out, I've got to go off our Xbox. One second, I'm sorry.
In fact, town clerk, you're breaking up now and your picture's wobbling.
I think that's my light, actually. Just started flickering.
Is that better? Are we working again or?
It appears to be, Richard. Give it time and see whether it's sorted out.
Is that working now?
Continue.
You've gone altogether, Richard.
Sorry?
You've gone off screen altogether.
Turn the camera off. Is it working?
No.
It's working now, your camera's off.
Yeah, so you can hear me now.
Yes.
Okay, that's better. I don't know what's Okay, so the next one was, what was it? Did councillor? No, all their hands are down. Okay, so the next one item fifteen, which is the climate emergency update and action plan. I'm gonna guess that's back to councillor Needham.
Oh, right, are we on to that? Okay, sorry. Yes, there's a document that I produced, which is the Energy and Greenhouse Gas Emissions Report. So basically, I followed several greenhouse gas protocols and actually managed to calculate the council's carbon footprint. So it's just under twenty-four tonnes of CO2, which isn't too bad in the grand scheme of things. But obviously, at this point, there is a lot of recommendations that have been made, some of which can go to different committees. But there is actually a question that, because we went through this at the Planning and Climate Emergency Committee meeting and the idea was floated about whether or not we would like to offset the twenty-four tonnes of greenhouse gases that we emitted. For those of you that don't know about offsetting, it's basically making a payment to a group that can actually offset by different schemes cut back on their carbon emissions. I will be the first person to say that this is a cheat. This is absolutely not the way to go forward long term. Because all you are doing is actually transferring the problem elsewhere. So no, you know, I don't want people to get the idea that we can just do this every year and then we're carbon neutral. But it is something that obviously we can't do about anything about the emissions that we've previously made. So then we have got the option to offset that and effectively declare ourselves net carbon zero. The various schemes that I've looked into, some vary in cost, you can get to it for as little as six pounds a tonne. Some go up to twenty-five pounds a tonne. They've got different variability in how credible they are. But the ones that I've looked at that seem to be quite credible, about ten to eleven pounds a tonne. So we're looking at about two hundred and fifty pounds to offset our carbon footprint for that year. Obviously, I don't like to say, okay, that's, we'll use council reserves unless everybody approves that. So there's several options. We could decide not to offset at all. We could offset and use council reserves to do that. Or we could come up with a scheme where we all chip in a bit if we feel like it. I'm not gonna say everybody's got to do it. It's basically up for discussion about whether we want to offset our carbon footprint and effectively declare ourselves net carbon zero. So I'll hand back to Mr Chairman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I've got no video now, so I'll just use the speaker as long as you can hear me. So I'm not too agreeing with you. So we're doing A first and aren't we? We need to vote on that. So it's been proposed by councillor Needham. Has anybody seconded the A part?
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So we're voting on to consider if the council will offset last year's emissions and declare a council to be carbon neutral at a cost of two hundred and fifty pound options for payment to be discussed and that, like you've just done that bit, haven't you?
Yeah, just explain we've got several.
Okay. So we're voting on part A to start with and then we'll come back to B after. So councillor Atherton.
Four. Sorry, before we go to the vote. Obviously, Theresa did present a number of options, but nobody's actually discussed which option we'd like to go for. So ideally, you would want to make that as part of the resolution that either we pay for it with a whip round or from, we could do it from underspend actually because it's a small amount. Or, yeah, or not to pay at all.
Okay.
Can I say something?
So, yeah, you can follow them ideas forward so that we can vote on it.
For me, we discussed this quite a while back. I can remember us all putting a few quite across a lot of good ideas. And I think we all were in favour of spending the two hundred and fifty pounds and offsetting last year's carbon emissions. Now, I'm not the be all and end all on this. This is Theresa's pot. But I think with us getting the money from reserves or a small amount from underspend, it's a very good investment to show we're leading the way forward with the Borough Council as well, that sort of thing. Whoever's next?
Councillor, I think we've got councillor Brown.
Yeah. Who do you want first, Mr Mayor?
If it's councillor Brown, please.
Oh, hello. Yeah, I've been a member of Friends of the Year for over thirty years and it's so I'm all for offsetting. However, I'm not sure whether we can bring the town with us, all the town with us on this one. If they start seeing that we're giving money to a third party but having no sort of governance over it. So if we do it, we just do it at once and then think of how we're gonna do in the future. For example, if we could have a number of trees which would have part of it and buy a job lot of trees and give them out to people who want to plant them, people can take part in offsetting, if you like. Yeah, so I'm slightly uncomfortable, but yeah, I agree in principle but slightly uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you. And is it councillor Patterson and then it's councillor Buffinger?
Yeah, actually, Bob's just really said what I was going to. And it was, if we're agreeing to the two hundred and fifty pounds for the offsetting, wouldn't we better off investing in some trees and offsetting that way? Obviously, that would help the community as well. So, but Bob really covered it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ross.
On the matter of offset, my reading is that the offset is just for last year and that going forward, we're looking to reduce our carbon, but we're not gonna reduce it to zero. So going forward, we could look at Bob's excellent idea of doing something like that involving more people in the town.
Thank you. Councillor Needham, did you want to come back on anything on that?
Yeah, I do, actually. I just want, I don't know if anybody's read the other massive report that I've put together. But the amount of trees that you need to plant is quite significant. So it's likely to cost significantly more if we go down that route. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. But I think in the later report that we're gonna discuss after this, I worked out that to offset the total footprint of Stapleford entirely, I mean, obviously not just the council. This is every occupant of Stapleford. You would have to plant in the region of nine hundred thousand trees a year. So, you know, tree planting, yes, is part of the solution. I'm not saying it's not. There are some offsetting schemes where you can pay to have trees planted in the UK. They tend to be a little bit more expensive. So it is basically a cost offsetting sort of issue here. So again, I'm not saying we can't do that, but obviously there is an additional cost to that. And then obviously, I don't mind doing it, but there's a lot more maths for me to do if we work it out on that because I think each tree is five to six tonnes over a thirty-year period. But I need to look that up. But yeah, just a comment on planting trees.
Okay, thank you. And I've got lots of stuff on here, actually. Is it councillor Tim Hallam?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I share councillor Brown's scepticism about this. It's whilst I'm supportive of the principle of offsetting and I do believe that net neutrality is better than no attempt whatsoever. This is also tantamount to a charitable donation by the council. That's well and good. I would just ask for a bit of clarity that we have agreed when we declared the climate emergency to aim for net carbon neutrality. And if that's the case, then frankly, spending money to achieve that net is within the remit of the council and hopefully it's already been budgeted for. However, if we're looking for something other than net carbon neutrality or there's any ambiguity as to whether the council's already resolved that, then I can't see how we can justify making essentially a charitable donation to offset something that we're not doing ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Brown, have you still got your hand up or is that from before?
I have indeed, yeah. Yeah, I've seen the number of trees, Theresa. That's for the whole town. I'm just talking about us. But don't forget, we are part of Sherwood Forest, or we used to be. So we could perhaps reforest some of the areas. But if we're just looking for art, we're just looking for stuff for us, aren't we? But we've got to find a way of, it's not just our council that's got to think, we've got to be green, we've got to take people with us. But I totally agree with it. Absolutely, as you know, I've got a green tinge. But how can we take people with us that we're going in the right direction? You know, we're getting neutral. How can you do it as well? That's what we want to say to folk around us, something.
Okay, thank you. So who's next? Councillor Grendel and then I think it's back to councillor Needham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, actually, I do agree with councillor Brown. But I think the best way, without getting too complicated, is to find areas within Stapleford where we could plant trees. I know you need nine hundred thousand or whatever it is, but anyway, whatever we actually plant would help. And get one or two get one or two of the schools for the children under supervision to actually plant them. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Grendel. Councillor Needham.
Hello, yeah, it's me again. Yeah, there is actually a second document that outlines how the strategy for trying to cut the carbon footprint of the community. So it's just the first document, which was the council's calculation. So I'm sorry, I did confuse things by starting talking about the amount of trees that we need to plant. If you're wanting to go down the tree planting route, I'm completely happy to do that. I can do another calculation, like I said, and work out the number of trees that we can plant. And I'm happy to cost that up instead of if you would rather go down that route. I mean, this is why it's absolutely for discussion. So yeah, if you feel that that's the way that you want to go with this, I'm perfectly happy to do that. Now I'll come back to the Chair.
I've completely forgot. Option. So have we proposed option, we're choosing and anybody second? Or Theresa's just forward? Does that mean we can do that?
I will second that.
Sorry, we haven't had a proper motion put forward yet, Chair. So we've had a discussion about the options. So now if somebody needs to move something.
If I can, I'll move something. I propose that for the last year, we pay the two hundred and fifty. And for future years, we look forward at planting and obsessing as much as we can with the actual offsetting as much as we can with the planting etcetera that we've talked about and that councillor Brown's very interested in and so to councillor Needham. Thank you.
That's proposed by councillor Frost. Does anyone second in that? Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Have you done it? Who's done it?
That was Ross, I think.
It was.
Thank you. So, right, we've got something to vote on now. We're getting there. Okay, we start with the votes. Councillor Atherton.
Four.
Excuse you, Mr Mayor. Excuse you, Mr Mayor. Excuse you, Mr Mayor. Could you actually get someone to repeat what's just been said because we've had sound breaking up here? So could you actually tell me what the proposal is?
Okay, yeah, councillor Frost, would you like to read your proposal again? Oh, couldn't town clerk do like she wrote it down even better?
Yeah, yes, Mr Mayor. So what councillor Frost has proposed is that we pay the two hundred and fifty pounds to offset last year's emissions. And then for future years, we look at the tree planting and involving the community, which is something that we'll be discussing in the next report anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is that okay, councillor Grendel? Everyone get that?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, right.
Four.
I don't know if you can hear me at all, Mr Mayor, but I'll be four.
Councillor Grendel. Call to councillor Grendel now.
Four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Epton.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor Hallam. Jess Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davies.
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Darby.
Four.
Four. Ross, are you here?
I'm still here, yes. I didn't hear you. Four.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. I even got your name right. Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four.
Councillor Needham.
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
Abstain.
Thank you. That's two abstentions and everyone else has supported it. So that's passed. Okay, so the next bit is to agree the attached plan, sorry, action plan and refer actions to the relevant committees for implementation. As I'm sure you've all read that. Has anyone got any comments or questions on that bit before we go to the vote? Councillor Tim Hallam.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I think that this is an amazing piece of work. There's a lot of detail gone into it. Some of it is absolutely spectacular and some of it I have some quite strong reservations about. Mainly, I think that it's at this stage a bit of an overreach to to spend a lot of time considering whether we can run an energy company within Stapleford. There've been examples of that kind of project not so far away from us that have fallen spectacularly. I know the wording is that it would be investigated and that's why I'm broadly supportive of it. But I would ask for clarification on how many staff hours would be spent on that investigation.
Okay. Thank you. And does councillor Okay. Thank you. And does councillor Needham want to come back on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to come back on that. I'll put my camera back on. Yeah, so it is very kind of like an investigation. And I'm not suggesting that it's staff hours put onto that, because I'm kind of saying, yeah, I'll do that. And like the committee, the planning environment and committee can look into that. It is very much a working document, and I'm sure that some of the proposals in there will end up being pie in the sky, and they just don't lead anywhere. But it was just a starting point to sort of like, look at things. Since that document was written, because that document was written in February, so I'm aware that Robin Hood Energy has gone per foot. It wouldn't actually be the council running it, because I did do a little bit of preliminary work, and it would be a CIC that the council would work with. So yeah, there is that. But yeah, it was literally an investigation. And if it draws up a blank, it draws up a blank. So yeah, I'll hand back to the chair now then.
And thank you for your work on that. So are you?
I've lost you, Mr Mayor.
Is the, is Theresa, are you proposing? Is someone else?
Yeah, I'll propose that.
Okay, someone second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Frost. So we'll go to the vote on B. Councillor Atherton?
Abstain.
Councillor Brown? Councillor Grindel? Councillor Grindel?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Epton?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam?
Come back to Jess, please, Mr Mayor.
That's not a problem, councillor.
Sorry, I've lost, I've not, I don't know who we're asking at this point.
Councillor Hawkins at the moment? Ah, okay, sorry, you kept glitching in and out, mate. Four. Councillor McGrath?
Four.
Hallam Davies?
Four.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Four. Councillor Buffinger?
Four.
Councillor Frost?
Four.
Councillor Patterson?
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam?
Four.
And then back to councillor Jess Hallam.
We've missed Theresa as well. I'm assuming she's four, though.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, councillor Needham?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, actually, yes, I think I'll go for it, four.
Okay, and then back to councillor Jess Hallam.
I think councillor Hallam's still away from the keyboard at the moment. So, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's passed anyway, because everybody, there was one abstention, wasn't there? And everyone else supported it? Is that right?
There were two abstentions, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, two abstentions. So that's passed. It's passed anyway. So that's carried. So thank you, everybody, on that. So item 16 on the agenda is approval of policies. These to consider the and approve the following policies, which have been recommended by the HR Committee on the 14th of December, grievance policy and procedure, shared parental leave, disciplinary policy and procedure, and complaints. So does anyone have any comments or concerns to raise on?
Yeah, if I, if I could just introduce this. So these obviously were recommended by the HR Committee, which was way back in December. And obviously, the HR Committee is quarterly, and we then didn't have a town council meeting for a considerable amount of time. Obviously, the town meeting was already pretty lengthy. We didn't want to add these on to an already very long meeting. So hence, they're only just coming to council now. With regard to A, B, and C, I would recommend the approval of the policy still. With regard to D, the complaints policy, the clerk has informed me that there's been some changes in the way that NALC have recommended we deal with complaints since this complaints policy was put together. I wonder if I could just ask the clerk to elaborate a little bit on what that is before we go ahead with this?
Thank you, councillor Kearney.
Through the chair. Yes, it's basically, the way that we've taken the policy is that either complaints come through to me or to the town mayor, which was the old way of doing it. And we would sort of deal with things. And then the appeal process was eventually through council. What I've been told is that that's not the right way to do it. It's got to be a committee that looks at complaints when they come in, to decide what to do. So whether to investigate or to categorise and put it in the right place, in the right process. So it does need relooking at, and it probably should just wait until we've got the full details on what we're supposed to do.
So is that, is that so D? Are we going to take that off there then, and take that back to the HR Committee? Is that, is that what we're saying? And then we're just looking, we're just, we're just focusing on A, B, and C?
Yes, please, Mr Chair. I would propose that we defer item D of this, of this part of the agenda.
Okay. So and then are we, are we like group voting on this? A bit quicker, unless anyone else has got any comments or concerns to raise on A, B, and C?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Ross has got his hand up.
Yeah, on the shared parental leave, point 2.1, the second bullet point, it says someone of either sex. It could be someone of either sex. I wonder if we need to change just that little bit of wording?
Yeah, I think, yeah, this, this issue's called a couple of times, hasn't it? I think, with regard to gender inclusive language. So yeah, we can, we can probably change that to say something a bit more gender inclusive.
And, and the disciplinary policy, a couple of places, it mentions the staff committee. Do we mean, is that a separate committee? Or do we mean HR?
Yeah, that's the HR Committee.
That's it, thanks.
Councillor Tim Hallam?
Not related to the matter at hand, Mr Mayor. Before we go to the next vote, I was going to suggest that for the roll call, since you seem to have the worst internet connection this evening, mate, that you ask the town clerk to do it.
Sounds good to me. If the town clerk's happy with that, then yeah, let's do that. We can get some chips earlier, can't we?
That's fine by me, Mr Mayor.
Okay, no, good idea, Tim. Well done. So we're going to the vote on this then. So we're voting to accept A, B, and C, and then defer D back to the relevant committee, which is HR Committee. And then obviously, that'll come back in the future. So over to the town clerk to do, to do the roll call.
Okay, if we're all ready. Councillor Atherton?
Four.
Councillor Buffinger?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Councillor Frost?
Four.
Councillor Grindel?
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam?
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam?
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davies?
Four.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
Four.
Councillor McRae?
Four.
Councillor McGrath?
Four.
Councillor Needham?
Four.
Councillor Patterson?
Four.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Chair.
Hey, we got there. Right, thank you, everybody. So item, next item on the agenda. Can I just have a quick comfort break? I don't, but I just thought we've been here a long time. Does anyone need a comfort break? Or you're all okay to carry on? Oh, I'll take it. Everyone's all right.
Chair, I like it. Yeah, I like a cigarette.
I don't know about that. I was thinking if you needed a tickle.
Breathe your smoke.
Mr, Mr Mayor?
Yes?
The next item on the agenda, I put on for, as a, as a proposal, members' proposal for this meeting, because at the time, the Stapleford Town Deal was looking to be concluded in October. Now, the, today, that has been pushed back for unrelated reasons to do with government policy to January. So there is no, since it's getting on a bit, I would like to, if it's possible, to, to push back my motion, item 17, to a future meeting for the sake of expediency, please.
Okay, well, I'm, it's your motion, you put that forward. I'm happy to accept that. Have you got someone to second it?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, I'll just thank you for that. I'll just ask the town clerk quickly. Do we need to vote on that? Or can it just be done like that? Because that's the person that put it forward. I don't want to get it wrong.
Well, yes, it's his motion. So if he doesn't want it to come to this meeting, then we can put it to another one. I don't think you need to vote on that unless you've got somebody seriously objecting.
Okay. Have we got anyone seriously objecting?
Ross has put his hand up.
Okay, Ross?
Sorry, I forgot to put that down before.
Not a problem. Okay, so, okay, so item 17, as, as we've had a recommendation, and it, the 17A has been moved to a future meeting. So thank you for that. So that's been accepted. So moving on now to 17, which is, right, motion to manage the flower beds in Walter Park of EC Square and the Memorial Gardens. And it's been proposed by councillor Needham, seconded by councillor Patterson. I'm sure you've all read it all. And I'd just like to say if councillor Needham would like to introduce that one?
Yes, I mean, it's fairly self-explanatory. We did do the, as a volunteer group, the beds, like we said, for the sunset salute. I think it's something that actually, you know, we feel the people involved, that we could actually do, do us proud, because it is actually a focal point of the town centre. And like I said, you know, this is not just about doing flower beds. It's actually a really nice way of engaging with the community. Because obviously, it can deal with issues of isolation, it's the possibilities of people learning new skills and stuff. It just so happens that we get our flower beds done at the same time and make the town look nice. So it's a bit of a win-win, really. So I won't talk about it too much, because you've read it all. So yeah, I'm handed back to you, Mr Chair.
I'll try to raise on that before we go to the vote.
Chair, first of all, I, well, as me and you know, right, we've both been trying to sort it out for a long time. I think it's good now that hopefully, the town council are taking it on. As we spoke earlier about people being, you said you want a good gardener and this, that and the other. And I'm sure you're not, because I definitely ain't.
I'm sure too, no.
Yeah. And it's hard for people that work and do this, that and the other. Volunteers are needed, right? And people with the right qualifications, right, that can help us to do what we, I suppose, what me, you, and loads of other people always wanted.
Yeah. But thank you for that, councillor McGrath. I mean, anything, I'd, I'd like the bit at the bottom where it says, the council will review the situation after six months with a view to expanding the scheme, once interest from volunteer groups is better understood. I mean, I know, it is hard doing the planters. I mean, them in the town square, they're brilliant, they look dead good. And I said earlier, thank you to everybody. Yeah, it is hard work. It's very hard work. And you do, you do need lots of volunteers. And sometimes it's difficult. But yeah, if the town council's doing this, if no one else has got any comments or concerns, then we can go. Oh, hang on, councillor Grindel?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, it's a scheme which is, is thought out. The only thing that concerns me is regarding possibly bringing in contractors. Now, what do you want contractors for? Could someone explain that to me? And secondly, this obviously is under the umbrella of the town council. So is the town council going to make a list of all the volunteers who, or groups who actually wish to participate? And have all negotiated, possible negotiations been done with the borough? Thank you.
Appreciate that, councillor Grindel. Thank you. And I'm sure councillor Needham will be able to answer those questions.
Hello, yes. Well, I've, I've obviously started discussions with Tim Crawford, because he's the guy who gave us permission to do the flower bed in the first place. He was very enthusiastic, actually. So coming back on that, will negotiations, yes. We've put a few feelers out with some volunteer groups, the WI, I think Sue Patterson, I left in charge of doing that. So yeah, she, she can probably tell you the other groups that we've been talking to. And generally, the feeling is very positive towards it. And I know Richard's group, you know, are always keen. So hopefully, he'll get involved as well. I've completely forgotten the other thing that you were asking me. What was the other part?
Contractors, contractors, contractor. What's all that about?
It might be that there is a big job that we feel that maybe it's not appropriate for the volunteers to do. Because like John Hawkins was saying, there might be a bit of digging out that needs doing. Hopefully, we can talk to the borough nicely and get a bit of help with that. But it may be that occasionally, we need to go to a contractor just to do a bit of heavy work, if there's a tree stump that needs digging out or something. So it's just to cover that, just in case. But obviously, if we get the town, now we've got the town ranger role, you know, it might be that that's lessened. But that's why it's an up to, just in case there is that eventuality. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your answers, yes. And no one will want to see, no one more than I will want to see this town blooming. Obviously, it's keeping the volunteers occupied, not just between now and Christmas, but you know, for future reference. Now, you do say, obviously, you know, we'll look at the situation in six months' time. And I quite understand that. The only problems, it's not problems, the only thing that comes up with me is that volunteers start off very well, and whatever they do, and we thank them for it. But if we're not, we do not want to lose any. So it's, it's, it's the sort of thing which we need to keep an eye on. But I'm quite up for it. I think it's very good. I should join in myself. But making the town more beautiful, looking better, then that's brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grindel.
Am I allowed to come back on that, Mr Mayor?
Yeah, of course you can.
Okay, thank you.
And then after you, it's.
Okay, it's just that, obviously, we are looking hopefully to expand the project. So if this is successful, we might be looking to take on more flower beds and do more projects so that we can keep the interest of volunteers. And hopefully, we'll get some range of different skill sets as well. So yeah, I understand the point, because obviously, motivating volunteers is quite important. And hopefully, we'll get them tea and biscuits as well. Okay, thank you. I'll hand back.
I'll be up in the line for tea and biscuits, or coffee, maybe. Thank you.
Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, just to follow up Theresa, really. I've been in contact with the WIU3A and a few other groups that are interested in helping out. But unfortunately, due to COVID and the age range, they're a little bit nervous at the moment. So I think it's, it's a matter of keeping them in the loop and keeping informed of what's going on. And when they feel that they can participate, that they'll actually join in. Yeah, so there are several groups that are interested in helping us. And hopefully, the volunteers will grow over time. Once people start seeing what's happening, people then like to get involved, usually. So that's all, really.
Can I say something?
Councillor Frost?
I've been in contact with forces in the community, also with the Royal British Legion Riders. And they are quite interested in getting involved with this. And especially the, some of the Blind Veterans Association, they're quite interested as well. So there is quite a strong military theme as well.
So there is quite a strong military theme as well for a military square, which I thought was a nice little nod to its use as of what it is.
Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Frost. Does anyone else have anything to say before we go to the vote on this one?
Now, do you mind if I speak? I can't put my hand up because I don't know how.
No, it's okay. Yeah, definitely.
No worries, John.
Okay, mate. All I was going to say is for a bed the size of the one at the back of Walter Parker Square, all you need is probably an hour and a half a week. If you've got half a dozen people doing that, you're only giving up fifteen minutes of your time every week.
Yeah.
That's just for six people. Once it's all planted and the right plants are in, there ain't really that much to do.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
And look forward to you helping us tomorrow as well. So we'll go to the vote on that one then. So it's been proposed.
Sorry, it was three o'clock when you reached it.
Sorry?
Three o'clock, yeah.
Two o'clock.
Oh, two o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Councillor Patterson.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just thank John? Because he's actually put a lot of work in on this, discussing plants and things and whipping us all into shape, really. So thanks, John, for putting the effort in.
No, thank you. Yeah, definitely. And I'm sure everybody agrees with that because it looks really nice in the square. So thank you.
And is your brother?
I'm going to let him off with that one.
Excuse me?
So we're voting on the motion to manage the flower beds in the town square and the memorial garden. Got a proposal. And we'll let the town clerk do that.
Okay, you ready?
We certainly are.
Yep, okay. So councillor Atherton.
Sorry, sorry, before we start though, Chair and Sabrina.
Yeah.
Surely Brockstone should still help us on that.
We're rattling through it.
So because we're getting volunteers, right, that, well, the mayor has done for a long time and other groups. But Brockstone should still be helping us. You know what I mean? It's all right taking it over. But let's not, you understand what I'm saying? Give everything that volunteers are doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they will. I mean, they still help us. They supply us with bags for all the rubbish and stuff like that. And, you know, when we've asked for things and that, they've always helped us. They've donated bulbs and stuff in the past. So obviously, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure with Theresa's negotiations and talking to Tim, I'm sure I've chucked a few bulbs every now and again this way. And, you know, yeah. It is a good point, isn't it? So if councillor Grendel wants to speak, and then hopefully we can take the vote after that.
Councillor John McGrath is quite correct. I understand where it's coming from. And don't forget, at the moment, this is to be reviewed in six months', six months' time.
Yeah.
So he's quite, he's quite right to raise that.
Yeah, no, that's appreciated and thank you. So are we ready to vote on this one? Okay, so it's over to the town clerk to do the roll call.
Right, councillor Atherton.
Four.
Councillor Boffinger.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Councillor Epton.
Four.
Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Grendel.
Four.
Councillor Jess Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor McCrae.
Four.
Councillor McGrath. Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Needham.
Four.
And councillor Patterson.
Four.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Chair.
Thanks, thank you. And thank you to everybody for the work pointing to that. And I'm sure the Stapleford is going to look pretty cool again soon, and not really the old already, but you know what I mean? Right, so the next one is, let me scroll down, motion to make social media GDPR and safeguarding training mandatory for all councillors and staff. This has been proposed by councillor Needham, seconded by councillor Kearney. So if I let councillor Needham talk about that one as the person who proposed it.
Yeah, I'm really sorry. It's me again. Yeah, it's a bit of a negative one to end on. But obviously, taking over, I was kind of doing a little bit of a risk assessment of what the risks were to the council and what the threats were. And this is something that came up on a training course that myself and Ella went to last, earlier last year. Or was it earlier this year? I can't remember. And it's easy to do because we've all got social media now. We've all got Facebook. And some of the pitfalls that people regularly fall in, and it can end up with a prosecution. And I'm sure you've all read the details. And it's costly. And, you know, part of the reason that we need the large reserves, as this guy said, was because we might face a prosecution in the future if we get this wrong. So it's basically, you know, obviously, look on the back of the HR policies, saying that we really do need to get some training, because then at least we protect the council. And hopefully, with individual members having the training, then they'll know to protect themselves as well. Because obviously, you know, anybody can be open to prosecution if they get this wrong. And obviously, as the council, if we've done everything within our power to say, you don't do this, and then you go ahead and do it, then it's your fault. But if we haven't given you the training, then, you know, you shouldn't be really doing this anyway. So I'll stop babbling and hand back to the Chair.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you for that. Councillor Hallam, and then it's councillor Brown.
Apologies, I've got a lot to say on this, on this motion, but I'm not going to have time to say it because I've offered to give the other councillor Hallam a lift to work since she has a night shift to run. And we've, yeah, she wants to, she wants to be able to get there quickly. So I'm going to have to leave. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to contribute to this conversation.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Hallam. So town clerk, I need to know that you both leave in the meeting. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, so councillor Brown. Councillor Brown, is your hand up?
It is, it is. Sorry, the buttons wouldn't press. Oh, yeah, three apologies to make. One to Sabrina, because I was going to get together with her on health and safety generally. I've noticed the Health and Safety at Work Act 74 has been implicated here. I'm not sure who's training you here, but I've only know of one successful prosecution. And that was against Sheffield County Council, because they had a child social worker that was stressed, had to leave, came back. And as you know, the Health and Safety at Work Act 74, if you don't know, it is quite an umbrella act. And you, reliant on case law within that, the case law was that Sheffield County Council did a risk assessment, did a return to work, and the prosecution was only successful because they didn't stick to that. The judge said in the first instance, the stress could have been expected with the job, and nobody could legislate for that. And that's been the case law since. So I'm not quite sure how this has come about. I am very, I'm interested in this concept, because as Theresa knows, we've done some work, as you would say, around that. And we do need to sort of, people do need to treat each other with respect and not, and bullying is not allowed. But I'm not sure whether this is the right section of the Act. And I was going to say, you know, before all this happens, a risk assessment needs to be done and shown to us. So sorry, I'm really sorry not to comment further. So my other two apologies is to you, Ella, and to you, Theresa, for not commenting early, but the stuff went into me junk. So really, the risk assessment, we need to see it, need to comment on it, and then devise a plan. I'm not sure that mandatory training for councillors is the thing. So what happens if we say, actually, we don't agree with the mandatory part of it? We're actually employed, if you like, by the people who vote for us. We're not employees of the council.
Yeah, no, you make, you make a good point there, councillor Brown. Councillor Grendel.
Yes, I quite understand where, I quite understand where councillor Brown is talking about. But when it comes to training for councillors, if I could explain to everyone, if I may, Mister Mayor, is that up Brockstone, because people actually get allowances and things, there is training provided if a councillor would like to attend. Now, if we're going down the route of Big Brother here, then I'm afraid that if you're putting it out that councillors have to, under certain sections of the code, then you've got the right to get rid of a councillor. That's going too far.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Grendel. Is it councillor Brown? Have you still got your hand up? Or did you want to come back? Councillor Needham, and then it's councillor Kearney.
Hello, sorry, you were breaking up a bit there, so I'm going to go. So yeah, to come back on the first point that Bob made, I have actually got, I don't know if you can see it, my training documentation from the training course. And I've literally lifted the bit out that was on the training course. So I don't know if you can see, it's in that bit there. So it does actually cite that that bit of legislation in the Health and Safety Welfare Act. It did tie into, obviously, as councillors, we are effectively employers of staff. And therefore, we have a legal obligation towards them. And obviously, the distinction was made between what is harassment and what is like a discrimination thing. So it comes into play particularly when there's a protected characteristic. So I think what the example that was given where this actually passed was like, it was a stress-related thing. But I think the example that the chap gave, who was actually a solicitor who did a lot of cases, defending councils in court. So he did know his stuff. And he basically made the point, whereas if somebody claims to have anxiety or has medically proved anxiety, then anything that exacerbates that is actually discrimination because that you're not taking into account their disability, if you like. And that's where that really kicked in. So that was one of the things just to be aware of. In terms of like making it mandatory, we have to prove that we've done everything that we possibly reasonably can do to ensure that we don't fall foul of this. So if we make it optional to do this, are we really doing everything we can? So it's basically, it's going to have to be a mandatory thing for this, I think, you know, it's belt and braces. I can't understand why anybody would not want to take upon the training, because obviously, it is for your protection and it's for the protection of the council. So yeah, I'll hand back to the Chair.
Thank you, councillor Kearney, and then it's councillor Brown, I think.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I've just, yeah, I think sort of similar to what Theresa's saying, what we've got to appreciate is these particular training items have been selected because of their importance in the law. If you do not comply with these as a councillor, you are breaking the law. So these are things that are going to be for the protection of councillors and to stop the council being brought into disrepute. And of course, most importantly, the protection of the rights, the legal rights of the people that we are representing. Now, I think, if I may just say, Bob, you know, you and I, we've both worked in the NHS. There are people here who've, you know, I mean, Theresa works in a university, so she works with students. So people who've worked in those careers and come from those backgrounds are very, very aware of the requirements, down to the finest detail of what our responsibilities are. Councillors come from all walks of life, or backgrounds, or different kinds of experience. And I don't think it is always the case that people have the same level of knowledge that I've got, or that you've got, or maybe that Theresa's got. And I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to dwell on this, but there have already been some issues with regard to social media and GDPR. And I think that that is something that we've, because of that, identified that needs addressing. And I think the equality and the safeguarding things were something that we identified that could also pose a problem, given the training that we went on. I have done a little bit of research, and we can, as a council, put something like this into our code of conduct going forward. There was a report done in January 2019 by the local government, on local government ethical standards, a review by the Committee on Standards in Public Life. And that was, that was clear in there, that there could be provision made for this kind of thing in individual council standing orders in addition to the model standing orders that we already have. So I don't think it's completely out of the question that councillors should, should not only be expected to, but also want to understand their duties under the law with regard to this, and protecting staff and protecting residents, protecting themselves and the reputation of the council.
Thank you, Councillor. Hello, do you want to come?
Sorry, I don't know if you can hear me. Is it okay to speak now?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, lovely. I support any motion that made it mandatory to provide it. I'm still not quite sure. Well, as you said, we both, we've all worked, the three of us have worked in big organisations, that it gets forced down your throat. But we were also told the competency in this is only applicable until you leave that room. It's up to you then to enact it. So whether you attend training or not, you still have to enact it. So as you say, it would be good for a councillor to attend it, but they may, but for example, I could say, well, I don't want to waste the council's money. I don't know how much training's cost, but say if it's a hundred pounds a person, I wouldn't want to waste the council's money. When already I spend, I would say, oh, five or six hours a year, training on this stuff as a part-timer.
Thank you.
Just a quick one, Mister Mayor.
Yep.
Right, I think we all know that, well, we all know what we've got to do. And a lot of people look up to us. It's how we respond, as Bob pointed out there. We're not legally obliged to do this, that and the other. As a council in particular, right, we have to be, you know, advise them right, what's right and wrong. And like you say, hold on a minute, right? We're doing the best for you. Make sure all our procedures are in place. So we look professional, right? Because most of us as town councillors, although we're borough, but we get paid. Town councillors don't. But a lot of people don't know the distinction between town councillors, borough councillors and county councillors, do they? So they're confused, right? So the more we give them, the more explanation about what we should do and what they should do, I think we need to advise them a bit better. As a town councillor, they know their legal rights. It's better.
Thank you. Anyone else got anything to say on that? Does anyone else wish to speak? Oh, councillor Patterson.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I've never actually done any training on this. So, you know, I'd actually like some training. I'm always up for learning. So on the other side from Bob, who gets this every year, it'd be nice to actually have some training.
Nice, appreciated. Thank you. I mean, the only comments I've got is where it says like the training. And I think whether it would save the town council some money or not, Brockstone Borough Council do some cracking training. not, Broxton Borough Council do some cracking training. And I know the previous administration to us guys that sat around the table now, even though some of us was there previously, that Broxton Borough Council have done some, they came along to the town council and did some GDPR training. I'm sure they'd be up for that again. Obviously, that would be a discussion with them. I can't say they will, but I'm sure they would. And they also do some really good social media training. And again, I'm sure the conversation with the right person, whether it's an online thing like we're doing now, or if it's actually in person. And then the other thing, I don't know if this is something the town clerk could look into, because I ain't got a clue how it works, there's the thing called learning pool, which is what Broxton Borough Council use. I actually asked them if it could be extended to include town and borough councillors all over Broxton. And I was told they pay like a licence for so many people. So maybe, maybe learning pool is something that's worth looking into. I don't know how much it costs, or how much it works, you know, I don't know anything about it. I just know I've done a lot of the training on there via Broxton Borough Council. Maybe that would be something that's worth looking into. But I think we've got councillor Patterson again, and then councillor Brown.
No, I forgot to turn my hand down again.
Not a problem, councillor Brown.
Whether we do the training or not, we need to treat the staff with proper respect. Yeah, that's, that's also, I'm agreeing with the thrust of it. I'm just slightly worried about, about the, the way of it. So do forgive me.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Grendel.
Yeah, I can, I can understand where everybody's coming from. And I've done a lot of training in my, in my time. And, and yes, and with the National Health Service. But you see, the way I look at it is this, that training is good. I agree with that. I've been to many training courses at the Borough. But having it in the town, the policy is here, except for the, except for the training side of it, I agree with everything else. I have my doubts about the training, and I have to be honest about it. So I won't be voting for the training side, for councillors, staff, yes. And the rest of the policy is fine.
Okay. So as, I think everyone spoke on that. So we've got, therefore, we recommend this council resolved to, and these three things here, agree that the council is to provide training for all councillors and staff on social media usage, GDPR, equality and safeguarding, and make completion of this training mandatory. That the matter be referred to the HR and Policy Review Committee to investigate suitable training courses for the needs of the council. And the cost of additional training be referred to the Finance and General Committee for Funding Work Purposes. And that's been proposed by councillor Needham, seconded by councillor Kearney. So I guess we're just going to the vote on that one. Town clerk, ready for that?
Yeah, if everybody's ready. So councillor Atherton.
Against.
Councillor Buffinger.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Really sorry, against.
Councillor Darby.
Abstained.
Councillor Epperton.
Four.
Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Grendel.
Against.
Councillor Jess, oh, Jess has gone, sorry. Tim has gone. Councillor Hallam Davis.
Against.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor McCrae.
Against.
Councillor McGrath.
Four.
Councillor Needham.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four.
Thank you. So we've got eight for the motion, four against, and two abstentions. So the motion's carried.
Okay, thank, thank you, everybody, for that. And I'm sure we all look forward to the training. So just thank you, everybody. I know it's been a long meeting.
Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. First of all, I know it's been a long meeting. I wanna thank the town clerk and the, for all the support that she's given us tonight, and yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, Mr Mayor, that, yeah, the council have done a lot of things this evening. And generally, I think it's gone absolutely brilliantly. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. So date of the next meeting is on the bottom of the agenda. And I'm sure you're all happy with that. So I'll just like, and have a good weekend. And then obviously, those that's helping us tomorrow, I'll see you tomorrow. So good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That's been really nice.
Good night.
Good night.